Evening. Our Councilwoman, Mary.
Evening. Evening, evening. Evening, President Young. It is evening in it. I sometimes, sometimes it's running together, especially when it gets dark at four forty-five. Technically, he's correct. Technically, he's right. Question. Endo document, backup documentation. Opioid settlement. Anybody not get it? No problem. You sure?
Yeah, I got it on me today.
That's it. Sounds like you're right. Need new battery? Nothing. Nothing. You got nothing over there? Well, but it's not working.
He's the camera, man. I was like, yeah.
I guess I better do, because I ain't got long.
And not, and not. And not to record it.
I got over here.
And we know that man can cheat here.
Hello, everybody.
It wasn't working. I asked Jeremy to see if it was bad. So he's getting, he's getting. He's getting a check to see if it's a bad one. Yeah, I got it.
I know she was back today, okay, but she.
But you do want to listen, Jeff.
Is Tara not coming with?
She says she didn't have to be up here yet. I said, not yet. She's, this is a special call. She's just going to come up here and say this. Don't you doubt. Why? Why? You don't like my company? Thank you. You don't like my company? It's working, I think. Test it.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Uh, we're going to call to order, uh, this special call meeting. We hope that it will not take very long to handle one issue that needs to be taken care of in a timely fashion. Uh, so at this time, this special call meeting is hereby called to order. Uh, and we're going to, uh, prayers always in order. Let us bow our heads. Dear Father, we thank you for allowing us to come together this evening for the purposes of conducting the business of Selma, Alabama. We pray that you direct us in this discussion, dear God, and guide us and help us to reach the right conclusion uh, regarding this matter for this meeting. We ask you to invest in the precious son. Each and every one of us say amen.
Amen.
Amen. All right, now we'll go and just, uh, have a roll call. This is a special call meeting. We're going to ask clerk to please form our roll call.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
President, President Young.
President.
Councilwoman Harville, Councilwoman Christie Thomas, Councilman Carmichael.
President.
Councilwoman Jane, Councilman Randolph, Councilman Jensen.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas, Brad, Councilman Johnson.
Yeah. Now, clerk, how many council members do we have present?
Five.
All right, please allow the record to reflect that we do have the necessary number to conduct business as been determined for, uh, for this special call meeting. At this time, we're going to ask our attorney to please present, uh, the attorney's item to us and following his presentation, if you have any questions, you may direct those to our attorney, attorney Matt.
Thank you, President Young, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Uh, good evening, uh, and all the other members present in the chamber. Uh, Councilman Carmichael asked me some months ago about something that I hope he recalls now. Uh, an opioid settlement. This meeting tonight is about the communication from the attorneys handling that claim on behalf of uh, Alabama, the Attorney General's Office, Attorney General Marshall's office is supervising this suit on behalf of the state of Alabama. The information I got last week, I want to say, was about information that came to my attention uh, regarding the opioid settlement. It styled the endo settlement because of the nature of the claim itself. What I got was information that was dated October of last year, a week, week and a half ago. So that's hence the urgency of trying to get the resolution before you get it discussed, approved, if, if possible, and that's my, going to be my recommendation. Because a deadline of January the twenty-sixth was presented to me a little bit over a week ago, maybe ten days ago. It was included in my last report to you. However, due to technical difficulties, we won't go, we won't go there at this time. Uh, it was not presented. That's why I asked for this meeting to get at least approximately a week between us and the deadline to turn this in so that we're not afoul of the deadline this coming Tuesday, which is the twenty-fifth. I'll, it'll take about two, three, about three minutes to read, so I'll read it, the resolution. It's just over a page. Uh, Resolution R one forty-three dash twenty-one slash twenty-two. Resolution authorizing the city of Selma to join the state of Alabama and other local governments as participants in the endo settlement. This is the style of the resolution forwarded to me by the attorneys that they're requesting be presented to the council. We're already on a list of municipalities, political subdivisions of the state. Dallas County and the city of Selma are separately on that list. But this resolution is necessary for the city to receive payment out of the funds of the settlement. Whereas the opioid epidemic continues to impact communities in the United States, the state of Alabama, and the city of Selma, Alabama. Whereas the city of Selma has suffered harm and will continue to suffer harm as a result of the opioid epidemic, whereas the state of Alabama and some Alabama local governments have filed lawsuits against opioid manufacturers, distributors, and retailers styled in quotation marks opioid litigation. Whereas the state of Alabama has entered into a settlement agreement with Endo Health Solutions Incorporated and Endo Pharmaceuticals Incorporated styled Endo, which includes the claims for the state of Alabama's local governments and the city of Selma finds the terms of the settlement agreement acceptable and in the best interest of the community. Whereas the state of Alabama has proposed an endo settlement sign-on agreement to the local governments and the city of Selma finds the terms of the sign-on agreement acceptable and in the best interest of the community. Whereas the settlement agreement and sign-on agreement detail the allocation of settlement funds, which the city of Selma finds acceptable and in the best interest of the community. Now therefore, being resolved by the city council of the city of Selma, Alabama. Section one, that the city of Selma finds that participation in the endo settlement, settlement agreement and sign-on agreement is in the best interest of the city of Selma and its citizens because such a plan would ensure an effective structure for the commitment of settlement funds to abate and seek to resolve the epidemic, the opioid epidemic. Section two, that the city of Selma hereby expresses its support for the endo settlement and allocation and use of settlement funds as generally described in the settlement agreement and sign-on agreement. Section three, that the city of Selma's mayor, in parentheses, mayor, is hereby expressly authorized to execute and the city of Selma, city clerk, to attest the endo settlement's sign-on agreement. And the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any formal agreements necessary to implement the endo settlement and plan for the allocation and use of settlement funds. Section four, that the mayor is hereby expressly authorized to execute any formal agreement and related documents evidencing the city of Selma's agreement to the settlement of claims and litigation specifically related to Endo. Section five, that the mayor is authorized to take such other action as necessary and appropriate to effectuate the city of Selma's participation in the endo settlement. Section six, the resol, this resolution is the effective, is effective upon adoption the welfare of the city of Selma, Alabama requiring it. And a signature, a place for the date and signatures for the president and, and the mayor, council president, mayor, and attestation by the clerk. You asked Mr. President for the backup documentation and I was, uh, told a few minutes ago that some of the members here, present council members did receive it. That backup documentation states in the main that the state has agreed to a settlement of twenty-five million dollars from this settlement only. This settlement only, uh, twenty-five million dollars, but there's a sixty, forty breakdown of the division of the settlement proceeds. Sixty percent is going to the state, forty percent to the subdivisions, political subdivision. If my math serves me correctly, and I did this already in my head, sixty percent of twenty-five million is fifteen thou, fifteen million dollars. Uh, that leaves ten million dollars to be divided. When you divide it among however many self-politics, political subdivisions there, it will not come to millions and billions of dollars per litigant. However, it's money that if you don't take, somebody else will. So my recommendation is going to be that the council approve the resolution and accept the money.
And council, if you look at that document, you'll see where they did the breakdowns of the various cities. And, uh, and you'll see, uh, Selma City listed in there, uh, in regards, uh, to the mountain. And attorney medicine broken down, no, we won't be receiving fifteen million for receiving a portion, uh, in the council, so.
And so would Dallas County.
And so would Dallas, exactly. So, uh, one question quick.
It's to be connected to dealing with similar to, um, some other federal funding to deal with COVID is to be developed directly associated in spend expenditures towards dealing with the opioid crisis. That's a broad statement and more specific information is contained uh, in the settlement agreement. I can break that out later, but it's designed to deal basically with problems that the opioid uh, epidemic have caused. Mental health, substance use disorder, cases appearing in court, possibly, quite possibly. We can deal with anything that directly and maybe in some, maybe in some cases indirectly can be attributable to the opioid epidemic. I would think, I would think mental health is a perfect example with probably the proviso that those funds are used indeed to assist with substance use disorder of any type, of any type. I wouldn't just limit it to opioid, substance use disorder.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yeah, when you would read it. Uh, and your lawsuit, but I'm having, uh, you add it on to more pages to the, uh.
Only have a page and a half in the resolution. Yes, ma'am. That's all I read. There, there, there are headings with section, the words sections in them. I think, I think you have the right one.
We're not, we're not strange. I remember years ago, the backup settlement agreement, so these are, they let the states represent and because the states have this, uh, procedural posture to actually do it, so, um, this is not uncommon.
And more lawyers.
With that said, uh, council, is there a motion, uh, to approve the resolution as read by our attorney? What was the resolution number?
Resolution R one forty-three dash twenty-one slash twenty-two.
One forty-three, last twenty-one, last twenty-two. All right, is there a motion to approve the state of resolution? All right, is there a second? Okay, please allow the minister to reflect that it was moved by Councilman Johnson and properly stated by Councilman Johnson to approve the resolution of R one thirty-three, uh, twenty-one slash twenty-two. Are we ready for a question? Roll call, however.
President Young.
Uh, on this one, uh, I'd say, uh, due to my appointment, uh, as an assistant attorney.
Councilwoman Harville, Councilwoman Christie Thomas. Councilwoman Carmichael.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jane, Councilman Randolph, Councilman Jensen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas. Yeah, Councilman Johnson.
Yes, and I want to give a lot of credit to the administration, uh, we did get some done, make this gospel, make it happen, and, uh, uh, thank you in terms of working with it, uh. They, uh, got some done, they watched it, they did, so it was a good thing. I appreciate it, yes.
Now, clerk, please read back the results and say it.
Yeah, five, five, two, one.
Thank you so much, council, for your votes. Uh, there'd be, there'd be no further business for a special call meeting, a special call meeting, thanks, sir. All right, Stacy, uh, it's already six o'clock PM and, uh, therefore we're going to get started.
I, I have some more information to disseminate to the council. I just want to pick it up.
Yes, sir.
For the, for the six o'clock meeting.
All right, all right. Well, at this time, our work session is hereby called to order. And we're going to ask Pastor Miller to please offer us our dedication for the evening.
Father, thank you. First of all, for this late time. And God, we thank you for our stick. And Lord, we pray, God, that this work session will be all that you would have to be. God bless you, lead us, bless our man. Bless all of our council members, Father God. We pray, God, that you send your wisdom and your strength, so that this city can be the city of men and women. Jesus, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor. We appreciate it. Where everyone stand for the pleasure of allegiance? Our pleasure, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much, everyone. You may proceed. Now, at this time, uh, we'll have a roll call for our work session. Uh, when I call your name, please respond accordingly. President Young. President. Councilman Harville. Councilwoman Christie Thomas. Councilman Clay Carmichael. Councilwoman Lisa James. Councilman Randolph. Councilman Jensen.
Yeah.
All right, Councilwoman Jane Thomas. Hey, Councilman Michael Todd here. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you so much. All right, now, ladies and gentlemen, we'll go to our citizens' request for the evening. Uh, we have two citizens that are listed on our agenda. Our first citizen, uh, who must have guessed, is, uh, Mrs. Carol Banks. And she is here to discuss landlord, property owner, garbage owners. So at this time, we'll hear from, uh, Ms. Carol Banks. And welcome to the city council, Miss Banks.
Thank you. I'm only here to, uh, reiterate some things that I, uh, help with Councilman Carmichael, yes, on separate issues. And also some things that I post on the city, uh, website. And, uh, according to the city government ordinance that I research. And also, I have forty years of experience in investment rental. That means that I'm not a property owner. My rental property is for investment only. Uh, I saw some historic property that I thought could be safe. So I invested that property and I rented for that purpose only. Uh, there are several laws that address rentals. Rentals are not clustered all under one law. We have laws for the business. We have laws for the investment renters. And we have laws for the landlords. Landlords and managers are two different rentals. And fall under two different laws in fatigue. Landlords are usually the people that rent, single dwelling up to four dwellings. Property managers have complexes. Complexes have different rules than landlords. Therefore, the law is straight on that. Complexes must have what the law called bins. We call them, uh, those big garbage, uh, dumpster, we call them, they call them bins. Property owners, landlords, with single dwellings of four, only have to make sure that we are following the city ordinance of keeping the property clean, free of garbage. We have to make sure that our tenants do not litter the property with garbage. And also have to make sure that in the garbage can there, for them to put their garbage in. It is the proper time for them to dispose of their garbage. And that's when the garbage truck comes around. Property landlords do not have to provide garbage services unless we want to, and I believe so. Most landlords already have their lease agreements laid out, specifically for Section eight. With Section eight, we also follow under the federal government. We follow under the state government and the federal government. That's who authorized what we can and cannot do. Under the Section eight landlord agreement, under the federal law, we also can provide for garbage services, or we don't have to provide for garbage services. The tenants get their own money for their utilities to pay their garbage services. What the tenant does is, under my spirit with Section eight, when I try to enforce the city's garbage ordinance, the tenants will strictly learn that they do not want to take their money and pay for their garbage utilities, and they don't. What I have to do, first of all, get up at six o'clock, uh, go around at seven o'clock, and find out who was putting trash out there on my property. Then when I found that out, I had to find out who did not have a garbage cart. When I found that out, it was all the Section eight tenants that were being paid to have garbage carts. They were, they did not. So once I researched the federal law in regards to Section eight, making sure that their tenants followed the contract that I signed to have utilities, including garbage. I contacted Section eight, and I told them, I said, you are violating the federal law because you're not enforcing your utilities when it comes down to your Section eight tenants. I have letters they sent me. So once I did that, Section eight sent all of the tenants a letter that I gave their names to and demanded they get garbage services. All of my tenants have garbage services. My, the main problem that I saw was Section eight tenants collecting utility payments and not, uh, and garbage services is not the only one. They want let allow, if you put appliances in your apartment, gas or electric stove, they will allow, if you have a gas stove in there, they will allow their, use your gas stove for their heat. They would not get, uh, their gas utility turned on, which is another violation of a federal law under the, uh, COVID program. So when I research your garbage ordinance, and if I'm understanding you right, uh, you're saying that, uh, the landlords must provide and pay for the disposal people to come back. Landlords do not have to do that unless we have it in our rental agreement. And if you go back, I'm going to go through all of this, uh, information that I gave you on the, uh, on the, uh, city website, but if you go to the city website at the last count, believe I posted the whole of Alabama nineteen seventy-five in regards to garbage. And I can't read tonight because I did not move my hair, or I'm just totally out of breath. But I'm giving you this information. When you go back on the city website, I mean, the last meeting, also, uh, M Y, reading investment garbage ordinance. And I hope that the purpose of my focus references to the, before it starts, is to make it public. The legal status and background uh, that provide to council, that I provide to Councilman Clay Carmichael. Uh, please, uh, and I'm paraphrasing, this is not exactly what I said. Get down, Lord, and I provide you the code of conduct, the code of Alabama, section thirty-five, that nine eight dash zero three one. Three one three. And it's there. Read just this part and be fresh.
Sorry, I'm going to repeat that.
Okay. Code of Alabama, section thirty-five dash nine eight dash three zero three. Ten to maintain dwellings. A tenant must dispose of the thrills. You will get all ash, garbage, rubbish, and other waste in a clean, neat manner. Uh, also provided, Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five. Uh, section four two zero dash three dash five dash seven point five. That's eight, a generator, a generator, and a person who produces solid waste is responsible for their garbage and utility use, not the landlord. Landlords do not come over to tenants renting it and dispose their trash over there. We have our own home that we dispose our trash and repay our utility garbage bill for having disposed of our, the dispose company that the city government has a contract with. I also researched who gives the code to. Code of Alabama, section thirty-five. Code of Alabama, section thirty-five. Nine eight dash four oh four. Eight, did I give you that? Code of Alabama, section thirty-five, that nine eight, that four oh four, eight. The landlord does not have to pay for the utility service unless he or she agrees to indirect agreement or lease. And I already have given you the code in regards to the tenant. There also is a code probably property. I didn't get into that because I only like to fight by, by, uh, by, uh, battles that addresses me. I don't go into something that do not address me. And what I gave you, I am an investment rental. And I do rent the tenants. And the rental units that I have, they were prepared for single young ladies. Prior to me getting where Lord blessed me here. And once I saw that I could help someone to be in a bad situation with their children with me, uh, I invested in two units for single ladies. Some ladies who have disabilities is what my rental unit is addressing. But now I only have one because one will burn down. And, uh, one is vacant because I'm going to have to repair it. So I came forward to give you this information and, uh, to my part as a sister, to make sure that we get this garbage ordinance right. I'm tired of garbage too. Everywhere I look is garbage. And I also feel, this is my opinion, if you don't mind me giving it to you. Uh, hey, you have a code person, a code enforcement. I've called your code enforcement many times. He comes out, he gives the tenants some kind of right of. But he also says his allegedly not my tenant. Well, if I go to court and can't pay, well, they're not going to do anything to me because I can't pay for the garbage services. At the same time, you're getting money to pay your garbage services. We have a major breakdown in between Section eight, our code enforcement, and how we are conducting the garbage services. Frankly, I believe each ward should have their own code enforcement. I just don't see how my code enforcement will address them, our boundary of garbage services. If each ward have your own code enforcement, that you provide him a computer and he go and, uh, categorize all of the tenants in your board. The ones with garbage, uh, carts and the ones without. That code enforcement in your board can go to his computer and let each council member know who does not have a garbage cart at their home that the code has. One code enforcement cannot do this. Uh, he just, he can barely keep up with when you call him and let him, let you know, hey, this person don't have no garbage services. It takes a code and office about six months to go and check that out. So you need a code enforcement for my opinion for each ward. And you need to have specific guidelines for that code enforcement to report to you each person that do not have a garbage can, cart, or whatever you want to call it. And when that code enforcement find that out, you need to counter, imagine if they notify that person that you don't only have, because Section eight gave those people only ten days to get garbage. They got, so you can give those first people ten days to get garbage and a report to you that they have garbage services. Now, I also was told not having a garbage utilities is not, uh, a legal matter. I don't know, I'm just going by what I was told, that you cannot do anything if a person does not have, uh, his garbage service. So you need to research all of that because I didn't, because I only know that all of my tenants has garbage carts, they pay the bills, and if they don't, I'm going to evict them. Because those are my rules. I give them a garbage application when they apply for renting water and all of that, I give them that. Before I give them the lease, they have to verify that they have the garbage and all their utilities on because they keep burning my souls out. But there is nothing else I can do. Once they comply with my rules and regulations, we'll continue with garbage services. That's where you and your code enforcement is going to have to step in and make sure these people continue paying their garbage. So, um, thank you for. So, um, thank you for allowing me to come and speak to you. If I excuse me for my communication, but I should take a minute. Inhale, but I didn't realize. Yes.
Go ahead, Captain Thomas.
Yes, were you aware of, we were having meetings on this, uh, our information that you gave us?
Yeah.
Is, is you working, the codes and some of those things? Were you aware of the meetings at the time that we had been setting up for to come forth, you know, uh, tell us, you know, just like you came down and told us all of that? Were you aware of all the meetings you had for the tenants and landlords? The landlords that owned the property that rents out, come forth and, and talk about, uh, the orders that we put in place?
Yes. I don't think you're aware that I have some problems
Oh, okay.
That prevent me from jumping up and anywhere I want to. I wanted to. Sometimes I can't walk.
Yes, ma'am.
God just blessed me tonight to allow me to walk up in here and give you this information personally.
Thank you.
Um, many times my feet and legs, well, it is very painful for me to walk on them. But however, they, they will still try to stop me because I can hardly breathe. And that's the reason why I didn't come, but I did contact, um, a couple of council people and, uh, talk to them about it, uh, with this information. But I felt fair that if I came to forth and entice council with this information and put it illegally in its meaning, then I've done my duty.
Yes, ma'am. And you have done your due diligence on that. And let me just say this, council, uh, we do have a lengthy agenda tonight. Uh, just wanted to remind everybody. Uh, and also that Mrs. Bates has provided us with a lot of information. So we know that this problem is not going to get solved right now. But what we have to do is do our due diligence. And I believe we're going to have to take this information that she provided, make sure our attorney office provided with that information as well, and also put this back into committee under Councilman Carmichael to further review. But I may comment, but this would be mine and we do that on items and stuff. I saw your end, Councilman Carmichael, first, then I'll come to you, Councilman.
I just wanted to, thank you for coming. I know you don't feel well. You mentioned that you posted information on the website. Did you make it Facebook page or?
I, I'm not good at this well, so.
You said it on Facebook page, okay, all right, it is on Facebook page. I just wanted to make sure that we had all the information right.
Yeah, there's a lot more than what I can say on there, it's a detail. I just clarified a little bit to do some code. And it made me some more, more code on me. But it, it's only said on, whatever it is, whether it's like a page or whatever. By Facebook or whatever, that's where.
Councilman Randolph. Did you say something that is right? You said, uh, tenant, uh, basically a problem, what's this going to be?
I think it.
I think it. And to me, also the landlord also to protect that same property. Well, the two letter of tenant, the term of, I thought it was no problem. Trying to put that out here, you know, because what I have all, they listen to me.
Yeah, um, I had a tenant. She was cleaning that garbage and you all, uh, little running over. And I got pictures. You can say she didn't have a little picture. And, uh, it's going to take some workers or code enforcers, they're going to have to get up and start taking these pictures of these people. And, uh, once you, you do that, they, they can't deny it. So then you can go over and control for what they do. And that's the ones that I evict are the ones that I got pictures of and I see them. And if they don't comply, then I'm, I'm done with it, yes.
Well, Mrs. Bates, uh, I know everyone here has a great deal of respect. And I think everyone here appreciates you exercising your civic responsibility and letting us know about this matter.
Yes.
So I personally want to thank you so much for bringing that information to us. And, uh, rest assured that this will be worked on. Uh, we trying, we trying. And sometimes we make a couple mistakes when we're trying. But I think everybody up here is willing to keep trying.
Yes.
So we can get something that's right.
Yes, um, if we work all together and put in a plan that's workable, it can be taken care of.
Yes, ma'am.
And now you have to let people know you're not playing with them all stuff.
Yes, ma'am.
So, uh, once they know that, you don't, you don't have any problem. But I didn't want to be the landlord right there sitting here enjoying everything and everybody else trying to beat around. That's what I'm going to do with this garbage because I already had figured out what I was going to do a long time ago. So I'm going to have this problem with this.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, but you have to follow these laws in order to make sure your damn place is followed law. Come there with your, with your. I beg for that too, and I'm sorry for this so long, but, uh, I, 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 I would say I don't come up here often, so. Nice night, and I'm not going to sleep until I have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, council can move on to our next citizens' center. Uh, no stranger to the council, Mr. Clyde Richardson.
Ladies and gentlemen, council, uh, glad to be here. I, I got to begin all y'all first. Year 2021, you have done a great job, an admirable job for cleaning the city up. We went from a dump to back to sale. And we have made the property go up and, uh, I want to make sure everybody, we do what we can to stay up there. So it's, it's an admirable job. As I say, Mr. Carmichael, there are some things you don't agree with, but it is good, we want to do it all. And we're going to do what we got to do. Uh, we got some things that need to be helped. I know nobody has followed up on Baker Beach. Baker Beach needs to be, see if it's clear from the city to the river before the next rain coming. I got property over there and we always have digging out, fixing floors, doing this, they flooding out. There is some lab buildings. So when we get into lab, let's see who saw the problem. That broke down in an absolutely magnificent way. Let's talk about, uh, property we own from Seventh Avenue and, Bim. And, uh, we got a sewer that started 10 years ago. Man, you look at that, I hope we do something about it, please. It stopped us from renting units on that end because it flooded that whole corner out. Unless y'all give me permission, dig it out, give me permission from all that building, I'll take my John here and clear it out. That's your deal. Give me permission, consider problems. All you have to do, give me permission, I act for that. No one in the neighborhood just to give me a call.
Give it a call.
Okay, thank you. Don't get there. Uh, Randolph. Eldred Street. We got a house that flooded out. Been going on a long time, we've been begging to plead for. We need to find a solution. That's in your ward, uh. We need to find, we got people moving out, abandoning the whole area because the water is flooding inside the house. If, uh, y'all can't figure it out, give me permission. I go over there and fix that street too. Just give me the, fix them all that building, that's all I got to do. We take the John here and clear it out. Please help us. I don't know what's going on, I'm glad now. I'm not going to tell you what's going on. I know I'm on a phone, right now, within all my channels. You know, I ain't talking about, uh, down here in the bottom land of, uh, uh, East, East Salem. We talking about up in the high, right about that. And man, time profits go for yourself. You know, uh, they treat all the property the same now. You know, because I'm going to take out that property to every ward in this town. And I know I have done, there are some people, people that love to call it, ain't right. They try to do it all right. Y'all make progress now, you're going to begin cleaning the city up. And I ain't hard on this company, I got a copy of that record, it's out there.
You tell me you love me, you love me.
You tell me you love me. Now, uh, when, uh, the water coming, when they come to each other, they don't mind, y'all tell them. Not to leave all this mud in our driveway. Because I, I, I got a lot of concrete in my driveway. And I had a person who identified me as shit and do all their work to take that mud out. I ain't pouring no paint, but right, right, wrong, if I come up to a water, I ain't that customer. And, uh, they just lift me the mud and then I hear something about this kid, right? We ain't mad, but they're trying to make the same conclusion happen. Now, this public request position y'all got on this document. Citizen request, pardon me, citizen request, pardon me. Sorry, the citizen request position we got on this document. Will be all my personal opinion about it. Now, my personal opinion don't matter here, but my personal opinion. I think that you take it off, though. Take it off because you don't, you haven't established a feedback procedure for. If there's, if there isn't a feedback procedure for your citizens that come and go and make a presentation about what they got, it's not you can hear and walk out and throw out and argue about it. Oh, no. If somebody took the time to come out here and bring it all in the city, they had some serious on their mind. I think you should establish a feedback procedure or take it off. So we will have no citizens to come up there. Send them load and we just throw it in the basket and hope we read. But if you got it for a citizen to make a request on here, you need to have a feedback receipt. If it's not to the world or to that citizen, it shouldn't be. But now, I know we got a lot on our channels and, uh, I respect y'all for allowing me to come speak. So, you know, I'm still trying to contribute to this city and I'm glad y'all done what you done because what you have done is made all the property better than it's been before. And that's good. That's all the way people want to stay. And who wants to stay in a filthy town? There are some things I may not agree with, but if it take that, to clean the city up, well, if I agree with it or not, we going to do it. And it ran his car by. Well, I appreciate everybody.
Okay, we will start with Captain Randolph and then Captain Taylor.
So I said the problem Eldred Street is once the water get to the corner of Eldred and, uh, Moore Avenue, the pipe that did. If you got a water, but this is why I'm trying to get in the pipe that did.
That's right.
You could dig out, you could ditch, do whatever until you ditch that meeting down there. On the corner of Eldred and, and, uh, Moore Avenue, you're going to see that have that problem. I mean, it's fixed. So, the engineer paid back there and Mr. Hitz, and they both on the situation on their problem. It's too small of a pipe. So we got to find a larger to do. Put a big pipe so that water can get over the pipe. Because that water coming all the way down, six everywhere. You want to get it there, there, it's whole six everywhere. It's a dumb thing.
Sound like?
You didn't pay him?
Nah, we keep carrying that road. We keep carrying that road.
No, we didn't take the game, we just got to get fixed.
We got you.
Yes. Council, already approved a volunteer resolution that waived your liability for this meeting. They can't get with it. Okay. We will work through it. But if a lot of it's a work we want to try to get done, we can work through it.
Okay.
Y'all already given it.
We did, we did. So I'm going to be a face now.
At that point, it ain't a lot of other folks and volunteer work. We need to make that for everybody. Probably like, uh, this is a big time.
No. No, Councilman Johnson.
And they just coordinated.
Mr. President, Councilman Johnson, you was right as far as your statement went. Councilman Randolph did say that we did not need a volunteer resolution for one person. I drafted one because I was requested. I also drafted a second volunteer resolution that you approved for anybody.
Right.
So you were right as far as.
So that's right.
And you approved.
Councilman James. Councilman James. Councilman James.
Mr. Richardson, I just want to thank you for coming forward. Um, you just let me know if there's problems in work or if you really want work. I try to take care of work for.
Good job.
You just let me know. But now I need to hear from you this, on the mother earth, okay?
Well, I'm the super man, man. Listen, three year old sex appeal here.
You have some feedback, I think your merits is big.
Anything else?
Councilman Johnson.
Yes, sir.
If you love how I'm building, if you did, you know, I appreciate it. You could did anything you wanted to do.
That's right.
But you stuck around, stuck around here and tried to see them building up. I, I thank you, man, I appreciate it. We went to school here, we played ball here, we grabbed like hell there. I appreciate it, you know?
Thank you, sir.
You ain't have to.
I miss you, I miss you too. Work this shit out. All right, anything else? Uh, just one thing, I want to say neighbor. Yes, ma'am.
Everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, I really do appreciate it. Thank you so much, sir. All right, now, we have something else on our agenda for tonight. Uh, he's wearing black, I think, tonight, and it's a good thing. And we have Mr. William Scott here, uh, our consultant here to bring some information to us. So let us welcome Mr. William Scott. And like the song says, tell me something good.
Thank you, sir. Well, first of all. All right, well, first of all, I'd just like to say it's a pleasure to be here with you today. Uh, in the house of some of our team members, not here today, but it's, uh, me here at one of our conferences with us last week, uh, during your finance meeting. And I had a great conversation and that led us to why I'm here today. Uh, working closely with the mayor, working with the finance director, uh, also looking at what the budget was being, that we had stayed. We were pulling out of budget, general budget, and moved on to American Rescue Plan. Uh, our team hit ground right and we were able to look at about, it was payroll salaries for the fire department and police department from the period of August 3rd to September 30th of last year. And that was about $2 million in payroll salary. And we are glad to say that, uh, in working with the finance, the mayor's office, we were able to see that we can move over about $1.6 million in reimbursement for the American Rescue Plan, uh, to the general fund. And which is going to allow them to have unrestricted fund that can be able to go for things that were moved out of budget, like they need payment, uh, upgrades the building, a lot of things that y'all had moved on. We were able to make adjustments so that now he can give to the general fund. And I know that the mayor, he has a budget that break down every expenditure, hire everything to go and so move there to do it. It's about $1,620,000. But don't fall on the penny chick because we're going to do an preliminary review. But don't pull them on the penny check or we're going to do an preliminary review just to get everything finalized after the penny. But we have a salary that actually will count towards the American Rescue Plan Fund. Now, for record, so that you have when it comes down to auditing purpose, is that there will not be a name that's in the general, in the record because we don't wanna put people's salary information out. But we all have that number. Because each officer and each fire person have that number. So that number will be on file with the clerk and with the mayor's office and also have a file with attorney so that it goes through documentation. And whenever you go to auditing, we can show a paper trail of what actually happened. Any questions so far?
Uh, Councilman, I don't know if you, if everyone clearly understands what our consultant just informed us about. But he just informed us of some really good news. Because what he is saying is that those salaries from March 3rd, back, oh, that's March 3rd.
Yes, sir.
We can be reimbursed legally under the American Rescue Plan. And we, and once we receive those funds, then everybody, they become unrestricted and we can meet some of these other needs that we need to meet. I don't know if those remember the case, but finance could be the meeting the other night. But you saw all the things that we couldn't do with American Rescue Plan. I, I was like, oh, I thought for sure we'd be used a lot more than money for those things. But this solves that problem. So I got you and I appreciate the work of the consulting company, Mr. Scottman, and everybody on staff for bringing us that information. And I think you gave us a proposed resolution.
Uh, yeah, yeah, uh, because Councilman Harvey has brought up about having a resolution on file and say, any transaction that you do, like the, the, what we're gonna do is we're gonna send you, uh, the official motion is approving what you to make a transfer that you authorize. And you don't have to, I got one of the things I'm gonna say about the transfer, but I'll say that again. But what it is, that that resolution actually say that, and then I gave it also to the attorney to make sure that everything he went by and worked just as necessary. But it just makes it whatever, you agreed to follow the guideline, the principal policy that we have that the mayor and the council working together, the team approve every transaction that will approve this venture. Uh, and that can be grouped together or it can be single transaction, but we want to improve together. And what that does is that it just say that we're gonna review it, just like we did with this. We're gonna review it, we're gonna submit you a letter stating that here's the step motion, here's why you can do it, you can't do it. Once the mayor look at city council and their team, y'all will agree to support it because we need minutes to say we're gonna have a paper trail or a re-documented justification for it. And that makes it, when you get audited, it makes a nice pretty trail and it makes a way we don't have any side action.
And that's what we for the remainder of the outside of that 1.6.
Yes.
That 1.6, y'all, that'll be the usual way we do it, we'll make it the way we see fit. So I think this is great, great, great news. Councilwoman Thomas?
I want to say that we will, are you talking about the, the city that we may, uh, propose? Remember who voted to give that for the salary? Are you talking about that money that we want to be reimbursed for?
No, this is just salaries, period, for firefighters and for, uh, the police department. This is March 3rd, their normal salary. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Scott.
That's what I'm gonna tell you, you don't understand.
Just the normal salary.
So the normal salary that the, from March to?
Third. Third, yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
Through September 30th.
Yeah, through September 30th. We give it within that good three years. Uh, and one last thing too is that, uh, and looking at the breakdown the mayor had, one thing that we have agreed to do is that the 1.6 that you're gonna have for these transactions like the other, lease payment on the general deal, try to different things in the next, what we're gonna do is we're gonna also oversee this to make sure that as you was trend pulling from the fund, we're gonna say that either you can do one or two things. One is you can make a full transfer to your general fund, uh, and then make the payment for those options. I, I intend to be, we're still gonna be right-handed and he'll be tracking and monitoring. Or you can leave it in the American Rescue Plan and pull it out as necessary, which allows us to keep a title, hold on it and track everything, whatever you have a title paper. And then what, that's one, there you talk to the mayor, like who's willing to make sure that for every transaction that you gonna do, we gonna be monitoring it, documenting it, make sure everything is aligned. So that way, even though you agreed to do it, we still on top of that, keeping everything aligned. So at the end of the day, it's gonna be what is business.
And what we'll do, Council, since we got this information tonight, I know that you'll have an opportunity to review it. And I'm sure, Mr. Scott, if you have any questions for Mr. Scott, then we glad to answer them for you. So, uh, we'll be given opportunity to review what we received, but what are here so far sounds really good.
And, and, and well, thanks, uh, is that that Lauderdale project that y'all asked about, that's the hundred and eighty-two thou, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, is that we're looking where you may use American Rescue Plan Fund. But, and talking to the councilman, uh, y'all and also to the mayor, we're looking at with the infrastructure money, it may be able to come in and assist with that project so that you may not have to use your American Rescue Plan Fund. And on, on that, me and the mayor is talking about. And then also the state is gonna have additional infrastructure money that is getting ready to come down. So the last thing I believe y'all waiting to be did, I know we got a lot of problems. If, the key word is shovel rated projects. Whatever you can do with engineers, you get shovel rated projects, like every project you possibly wanna do is that that's how the money gonna come. You gonna have maybe sometime twenty days to turn it around.
They told us how much.
Yeah, it may be twenty days to turn a project around. So you got, you got your project ready. And then if you got it ready, I'm telling you the money is gonna be there. And then also we need to look at going out to some congressional money. Because we should not come to on the soil to see where part of money may be available for bid for shovel rated projects. So we're willing to help whatever way we can. And like, we've already been talking to the council members. If you got anybody who wants to talk to about resources, please just connect with us, we'd be glad to help them out.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman, uh, Councilman Johnson. First of all, thank you, sir. It's been a long time coming and I know you've been, we've been talking. And, and you've been trying to help the city for a long time. And I thank the mayor, thank the council for bringing on board. Because you should have been on board back in through the last two instructions. And I appreciate you, you really been trying to get up with it, some stuff that we need to get on. And second of all, uh, so thank you again for what you did with, uh, employees, uh, Mr. Johnson. Thank you for what you did. Well, appreciate that, we need that. Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, any councilman, Chris Turner.
Um, thank you again, um, Scott, I've been wondering, hey, that you gave the finance committee, um, a week that we missed, do you still have an extra package? If you issue out to them?
Um. I think we simplified it, but it was, I give you a folder that gives, I mean, okay, I know it's not about the folder, hey, all of you. Yeah, we'd be wanting to get that, I can get that to the council president and to you. The thing was that she, yeah.
Yeah, sir, we can make. All right, Councilwoman Thomas?
I said some, uh, some of the key points what you just said, uh, during the advocacy day yesterday from the house where, then you can talk about all this money. Uh, you have great turnout. And they told us all the money that was coming, coming out. And some of the things you said, they, they recommend that to council people get in touch with, you know, they gave us a name, it's, it's a project that we, all, all of us need to talk. They told us that this is a chance for us to be able to get back through.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman James.
I just, I want to also thank you, Mr. Scott. I, I have followed your work for a long time and you know, you do a better job, young man. And you gonna try to do the best you can to fix or whatever it is. And, uh, one thing I do like that you are at all the conferences to get new information. So that's one good thing about him, he's gonna make sure he be up to date on what he gonna do for you. And I just want to applaud your effort. And I just want to continue to watch how you grow. And I just wanna thank you and, and you're doing an awesome job.
First of all, thank you, Scott, you're a mayor of, uh, Austin.
Austin, yeah. Austin, yeah.
Well, Mr. Scott, we really do thank you, we can't say thank you enough, uh, for this hard work in this. And like Councilwoman Thomas said yesterday, those of us that went to advocacy day, they specifically, the state legislature specifically said that this session, they're focusing on the Black Hill. And so that was music to a lot of our ears, that they realized that some of the disparities that I hear versus other areas in the state. So, uh, we're thankful for that and we look forward to you keep charging them out. Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, man.
Over to the mayor.
And, uh, that shouldn't take for about three, four minutes, I can fill this up to there though. Good evening, everybody. Y'all all right?
Thanks, my heart, uh, thank you. Sixty-nine, eleven-five. And I, um, want to thank and commend, uh, former colleague, Honorable Liam Scott. We share the same birthday. And, uh, that birthday to you and to Scott and me. Uh, we serve as mayor together every year. But, uh, I wanna, I just wanna thank him for doing just as he's done through to get us together.
Thank you so much.
To get us, uh, to get us together, get us ready for this American Rescue Fund money and infrastructure fund. And I want to thank council for, uh, working with us to get this done. Because, uh, this, this is a great opportunity for us uh, to, to get, uh, to get, uh, really some work done that we have not been able to get done. Uh, and, uh, I will assure you, I can assure you that Councilman Zul is working very hard to get us, uh, the additional resources uh, from Montgomery, Washington. Uh, we are constantly in contact and we really appreciate it. In addition to that, you know also that the city of Selma and the county and the water board, housing authority, all of us are working together to identify the infrastructure needs in our area. And we are, uh, communicating collectively, uh, to get what we need for this area. Uh, I think it's a beautiful time, so I think we're making good progress. And I, I just wanna commend the council, everybody, especially the team of folk that get this work done every day. But you are, you're the ones who, y'all actually do a lot of work, they do a lot of work, and they're doing good work. And I wanna thank them, uh, for their help. The, uh, uh, the, uh, you don't have it yet. Yeah, I got, I'm giving it on the moment. Um. Uh, the, yeah, it's, it's gonna be on the board. I don't know if we can get it to see it.
Oh, we don't have it on here.
I understand, I understand. It was email, it was email to you. Uh.
Yeah, but we're here for the email back there.
Yeah, I know, and that's, uh, I'm, this is, we, we, we dealing with that too, dealing with that too, this.
Meantime, can we get it on, on paper?
Yes, ma'am, it's on the way. Uh, Ms. Ellison is running copies now. And I, and I didn't want even start going through this without having a paper copies for you. Uh, so she should be coming on there with it.
Do you want to do the service report?
Well, we, we, we can, we can do that, we can do that and, uh, and then come back or we can, who's the finance report, Chris? The finance report, we don't, we go ahead and do that, Jerry, and you can do what we need to do with that. And then, and then I was coming. Thank you. And I have a lot.
Good for us.
Yeah, I, I don't have, I don't have a lot of it. And the way she has, more interesting than what I have to.
We got it.
Yes.
Okay, um, okay. Did you guys receive an email from? Uh-huh.
You didn't make that one up?
Yeah, we got it. We got it.
You got that one? I have brought it up from my phone, but still.
I got it right now. Come on, this is right next to it.
Uh, uh, the, uh, finance committee requests the documents about the phone number.
Yes, yeah.
Yes. The spreadsheet that, uh, that the finance committee request. Yeah, we have that, yeah. So if you got that, then, uh, and, and it is in the format that was requested. So go ahead.
I was told, I was told I had to speak louder, no one needs to use the mic. You hear, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. This should be risk spreadsheet in relation to property. That we put, property meaning, uh, equipment, um, and vehicles. One is for existing property, one is for property that is ordered, and one's for property that is requesting. Okay, the first one, existing property, that's, that's the current purchase and lease that we're now working with. And that total is two million, one hundred and forty thousand dollars, and we'll be the whole since, all right? Let it go to property that's called enforcement, fire department, public works, landfill, renovation, and this. The annual monthly pay, the annual police payments are four hundred and eleven thousand.
Okay, so that's, that's common, huh? Right there, is that right?
Yes. That is what we need, uh, to function for, uh, this current, this will be the basis of these things. Okay, the next one is landfill, the dump truck that you guys approved a few sessions ago. That, cost that dump truck is about a million seven thousand. Uh, the terms is four years, the annual this thing, the debt is four hundred and four thousand one hundred thirty dollars.
That's annual?
Annual, according to the number basis that it was, yes. I don't know this, oh, that's ten.
Four years? Forty now, the forty now, or four?
I was on the chip, I know.
Okay.
Okay, and the last one, probably the requested items, that's the one where the, uh, the budget process, also the items requested, repairs requested was from the budget. That's one point five million, no, not a million, five million. That's to, that's for public works, public buildings, public buses, uh, streets, air conditioning, heating, performing arts, the Evans Reception Center, the Venture Center, also a truck, also the state, state of communication towns for Old Eagle Museum, the Evans Building and the Pasta Land Building, as well as the Performance Center. Also those repairs, we talked about painting, replace the lower chroma sockets, any staircases, uh, replace the carpet, uh, uh, roof for the Dallas Academy Building. Roof for the Dallas Academy Building. So all repairs for all the city buildings. This also includes equipment that the cemetery department needs, weed eaters, pomegranate, hamstoffs, uh, backpack bowers, landfill also needs more equipment, a motor for next to theater as a return for more, more. And a new truck. Then you have the department, they need more software hardware, the city care's office needs computers for the bar cabinet. The tax and license office is requesting a vehicle, postage, furniture, more computer equipment. Also a way of distributing information to the public. As well as government to private businesses, the fire department wants a needs two trucks as well as a dog life. Public enforcement needs another two vehicles, regulations requesting a walk car, pressure washer, two trucks. The building inspector is requesting a truck. And unfortunately, by the time I have service to Ms. Ellison, the chief that I gave him, he was told he needs five new cars. What, what, uh, what the police chief would buy the cars. He was unable to get in that total, but he said the house, it was the same nature. That's what's on his, any already purchased twenty twenty one, we're looking at about two hundred seventy four thousand. So let me, the, 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 we, we discussed that before, we did with these of car they need time to get back for the
These are additional, these are additional cars because we are at any offices.
Oh.
We actually asked all of us.
Okay. So as soon as you give us that amount, that amount is from the waiter because I'm not sure if those twenty twenty one vehicles would have the same value or the same price as the ones that we bought in together at twenty twenty one.
So the, the equipment vehicles requested for approval, is that does he include what the budget, some of the, some of the stuff in the budget, some of the, you can leave?
It, it, it's each other. If you want to take a say out of that.
Um, speaking for public works, the only thing that was in the version of our public works as far as leases was only fifty eight thousand dollars. Yeah, for public works. As you can see, if you look at the green section, the public works, for their annual account, that is more than fifty eight thousand dollars. She, there's one piece of equipment that's going to cost us for one first full year, a hundred seventy four thousand dollars. You know, we, we are using, we're using our public works equipment if we are leased. Okay.
Are you, are you talking about what? Where are you talking about?
There's the clam bucket truck. There's, there's five of them.
What's happened? Uh, for the vehicle order, not saying?
This is, uh, approved.
Okay.
Not approved, but already existing approved.
The, the, so the clam bucket trucks were not in the budget?
No, they were not. But they were approved before this.
Okay. And, and now that's something that was continued. Oh, we already got five buckets. And then we just, we just swapped them out and got more five bucket truck.
Yeah, Mr. Hicks, you want to speak to that?
On the clam bucket trucks, the, the, the previous lease and the leasing of the truck.
It was a previous lease. It was already in effect. They already had five and it was time to renew the lease. And we just traded out the five that we had and renewed with the new five that we got now.
Over that, that's, that budget?
It was already pre-budgeted when, when we were leasing them. What we did, what we did, we actually saved money on them because if we had not released them, but we were going to have to buy, do that balloon payment at the end of the lease. So we actually saved more money by going ahead on, opting out of the lease a year prior to the lease being entered. And then the fact of COVID, if we had not ordered them when we did, we still wouldn't have any trucks until twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four. So this is an ongoing lease that was renewed and it was already, uh, pre, uh, you guys had already done, well, not you guys, but the previous council had already done this prior to us getting here. But I just follow suit what was already there.
It is absolutely right. But, but the other piece to that puzzle is when the council, when you did that budget and prepared, you moved a lot of those transactions under American Rescue Plan category, which meant that it was unbudgeted generally on. And so that, so that's, 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 that was the confusion. And that's why I kept saying it was budgeted because you actually approved the transaction when you did it. You actually approved that expenditure. But it has not been actually placed in the budget. And that's
That's, yes, ma'am. And so, so in order, I, we, there will be brought forth, we'll have to both pay that.
That is, that is, that is money in the American Rescue Plan now in being used as a general fund money that we can actually do these transactions and I'll pay for this equipment and we will track each individual transaction as we go. As a reimbursement to the general.
Okay, so this is, this is basically the budget adjustment.
That, that's, that's, that's it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you very much. I, I think now that we have some, I think we have some clarity about how we're going with this fair rescue plan money. The salary portion of that we shared prior and we went through how that looks with the implementation of that uh, GPI pay plan. And so those are the decisions, those are some of the decisions we just have to make to figure out how we're going to prioritize all the spending. I believe you have, uh, for them. And again, uh, we have not overcome all the technical issues we have. We don't get there. We don't, we don't get there. The, uh, the zero term laws, Hicks is trying to get ready for this grant. And so that's what, that first item is zero term laws. You have the actual purchase order in there. And if you know that, uh, that was originally budgeted thirty five thousand, uh, two sixty one. The cost of this transaction, twenty four thousand six forty eight. This is how we actually make certain, the department is make certain that, uh, that's in the bottom, uh, left corner of this purchase work document. That's how the department is determined and make certain before they even take a transaction to the clerk of purchases, before it gets to uh, the purchaser, uh, which is in the clerk's office, they have to verify that. And then we turn around and go to the treasurer's office and they verify. So you have all of these verification steps to make sure we don't exceed that budget allocation in these purchases before we even bring them to you. So I just wanted to point that out to you. So I'll be presenting that information on, on Tuesday. Asking for your favorable consideration on that. The blue ox invoices included there is in the, in the uh, erasure budget adjustment as well to ensure that the appropriate amount of funds are in the proper line item with the transaction. In addition, uh, in item two, uh, the resolution one thirty six, uh, to, uh,
That's mute everything.
Yeah, uh, mute the device a little bit. Thank you. That, that is the resolution, this is a five thousand dollar issue. It has been modified, if you will. So y'all take a look at that. I may not even call a poll on it. I'm just praying over this thing, but I'm hoping that y'all go figure.
Before you move to that, I have a question, Hobbit.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm trying on that item before that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Uh, you have a purchase order for twenty fourteen, twenty eight thirty?
Yes, ma'am.
You said that you already had something thirty five, two sixty one?
Yes, ma'am.
And then you have a contract transfer. So this already listed in that line item, why are we transferring?
I, I'm thinking the combination of these documents represent what that is. Mr. Hicks, you want to talk to that?
What was the question? I couldn't hear.
Yeah, she's asking the question, why are we transferring, uh, monies, why you have the requisition to transfer uh, monies from your, um, from your fuel account to your small two account? Uh, if you already had thirty, two thou, thirty five thousand twenty six in account. And my response was the transfer brings that line item up to the amount that there is, but I want you to go ahead and speak to it.
That, that is correct. There was not enough in there. So we brought it up to that so it would not be overdrawn when we get this money out to by those law. You're, you're correct.
The nation of those transactions that will bring the, bring that account to that, that, that budget.
Okay, so just to be clear, that the, the purchase order funded to come down thirty five thousand two hundred six was equals the ten thousand one hundred and one plus the five thousand two hundred thirty three first balance plus the twenty thousand transfer.
We did not want to clear that, that line item completely out after we buy those law, buy those zero turns. That money is trying to leave some money into that, that account. So we did enough to, we already had some in there, but we wanted to make sure that when we bought these, these zero turns, that we would not clear that, that line item out because we still going to have to use some money out of that account, that, uh, that existing account for other items.
Oh, you got it. That's been all under that track. Councilwoman, Congress, we got the command is correct.
Over twenty eight dollars.
Yes, sir. It's, it's gone. That's what I'm saying. It's gone. That, that, that does spin off the money that we got. Uh, and Councilman, I, you know, I guess, you, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Let me, let me make sure that I'm on the right. So the money that, uh, he wants to transfer, he wants to go back into the nine items of, uh, the fuel.
Yes, ma'am.
Move this money out of?
Yes, ma'am.
So exactly the amount that he wants to move out of here is about twenty?
Yes, ma'am.
Whoa, twenty thousand dollars.
That's correct.
Okay, so how much was, can I ask a question? We just moved twenty six thousand. Was it twenty six thousand dollars in that one out of the fuel line item? Now we're moving twenty four thousand out of the, it's a work fee.
Yes, yes, ma'am. We're trying, we, we just tried to, we, we trying to.
No, I just want to ask.
You're right. You're right.
Okay, so meantime, by the time for, for the grants, meantime, you know, all the vehicles in, in, uh, which is going to use to get the increase of the
Yes, yes.
So if we've used in this fuel line item, moving this money out of, so by the time, uh, starts and follow some of the grant, we're going to have to, uh, re, reimburse more money back in there to make there.
Mr. Hicks, you want to speak to that? I, I, I
Not, not, not not necessarily because the price of gas is going up and down. We're fluctuating. That's me. I made the decision to move it out of the, uh, the, uh, the fuel line item, uh, because the gas prices is fluctuating up and down from the time that we, that you all did pass the budget. We have not used as much fuel as, as we projected. That's the reason I was able to move this money. I mean, it's not like I'm just going in there arbitrarily doing this because I know what the gas prices are going to be because I don't. But by us buying it in bulk, when we do get it, we are, we're actually saving a little money on gas. Because y'all have to understand, anything we burn is not gas. And some of it's diesel. So diesel is a little bit higher than the gas here, but we're not burning that much gas at this point right now.
Yeah, okay. I was just wondering because we just had, you know, we're just talking about the eight more vehicles, you know, and I, I'm just looking at the money being moved, uh, out of the fuel line. I was just trying to see if there was something I can
Is anybody else have any comment or question about that? I just, I got one more thing. Hold on. It doesn't add up because of the adjusted budget line items, less than budget. Uh, it has, has a starting level minus what's been spared to get current out. But even now, it was, it, it, what, what we got, the budget, we actually have left in there is five thousand two hundred thirty dollars. A transfer of twenty thousand dollars there over will give us two thousand two hundred thirty dollars. We, we, you've got a transfer of thirty thousand dollars. In that budget.
That is correct. Twenty five thousand would be sufficient to cut the cost of the invoice. But, uh, that is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that is correct. When we talked about having a little money left in that account, you were right. That's it.
And I saw, just one more thing for the bricks.
I got you. I got you. I got you.
If we can just try to adjust it before we go, I'm certain.
I, I, the other items are in the, the order that he and the rest. And I'm just hoping, praying, just waiting for one of the council people to go here and break this issue up and deal with it, but I want to keep it in the ground. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Hicks, you have a report.
So y'all, this is easy.
My concern.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Do we need, do we need to report out on our
Is that Councilwoman?
The, the Zoom meeting we had yesterday evening.
Sure, I can do that. Yeah, I can do that.
Based on the numbers, I'd say there are no pretty much difference. But we still in the, in the red, the whole state is red. And so everybody just need to continue to be real careful. A lot of sick people. Thank God, a lot of people that were sick, with the city, they are back to work. They, they tested negative. And we just want to make sure that people stay well. So we continue to, to make the recommendation of wearing masks. And I appreciate, council people, I appreciate y'all wearing your masks and everyone complying there. Uh, we do sanitize the offices on a regular basis. Some of them, they, some spaces, they
Chief on tonight?
Ma'am?
The chief on tonight?
It's, it's, chief, chief.
Yes.
I, I, I
You have a question for me? Uh, if, if you can come over, uh, better decide. All right, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, chamberlain, you know, one of the district lines. As I said earlier, I don't want to go into the table because we have a fast time with my equipment. You should have, oh, my equipment two weeks ago now, our copy in front of you. And, uh, I believe oral diet, pre-oral diet, in addition
I believe oral items, three or four of the items, in addition to that, that I've added as a request by the office, or the mayor, or in the case of a special call me, of my request to the council. Uh, the first item on my report, resolution R one forty three twenty one dash twenty one slash twenty two, you already heard it approved, that's the end of seven of the law, so. Uh, I have number two on my reported resolution, R one forty two dash twenty one slash twenty two. Councilman Carter presented his version of a city's seal report to you as a resolution. Uh, he didn't know what at the time, but I had already drafted one, it's a lot shorter, I hope sweeter, but you can approve my delivery on either one of them. Choose to.
Uh, I think I've covered about that.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, the in in your resolution, uh it says, add a requirement search for terms of the current city's seal. And as far as I know, our current city's seal is available top. Well, according to the trailer, the master put it up there for us.
You mentioned that before too.
Yeah, so I'm I'm, what I'm, what I'm thinking is we need to adopt the seal that we're using, so we need to adopt that. And 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 just for clarification, the reason I wrote the resolution the way I did it, I for some reason is that people aren't using the seal without chemical or city permission, because I've seen the seal being used in uh campaigns or events and all kinds of things, but you know, that's our brand, city, that's our, you know, that is our brand, and and we should make sure that it's used properly.
Yes, yes, absolutely, positively correct. Uh, another issue I have with uh anything that's proprietary, intellectual property, or actual personality of the cities, well, not to mention real estate, is that some people fail to understand that public property in itself does not mean that each individual sits upon the property, it's the body politic and corporate of the city itself owns property, so you, everything you say has to be agreed with. You actually, you have to provide two pieces of what is reported to be the seal.
That's what we're gonna need to do.
Exactly, exactly, and and go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I I just have a question, and I should have asked, really, I apologize for your reference report. Uh, now, do you remember when Minister Yurainos? I think that was the person who really challenged the city about its seal.
Right, right, right.
Yes, uh, with the Luther charge, he was, he, if I understand, he was the person who challenged the city about its seal, and the council did vote on that seal. And 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 before before the battalion was done, that was a vote on it, and it was designed and elaborated, it was the biggest. Uh, we put the butterfly in there, represented this uh butterfly lady, and it was, it was, it was really a community, you know. Isn't that in the, isn't that in the record somewhere? There was a lot of it, so he came up several times, that like uh, this cloud, he can't, he can't call it time, and he stayed on the seat until that was changed.
I don't know, I can't remember. Well, that's not fair. Draft.
That's right.
What the city's seal actually is, that was, that was a draft, so and from what I've been told, it was never actually adopted, they just used the draft and not the actual seal, which is why that doesn't look, or why doesn't look like the seal that we use on everything else, yeah, but but I would, just to shorten this up, if we can get that documentation to show that we did actually adopt blue seal, because it sounded new, and and I think everything stays pretty updated there, so if we could just get that documentation, show us what what our current seal is, then we can.
Again, I, uh I have number three, resolution R one thirty one dash twenty one slash twenty two, vehicle, yes. I've got two, we must get back to the initial. Was. Uh, that's in the original report, come on, uh, I have resolution R one thirty one dash seventy one slash twenty two.
So the young people, all all way up twelve is on the last week's report, they need to finish the documents as well.
Correct.
Okay.
We started out with this twenty items, so you can spare it. Resolution R one thirty one dash twenty one slash twenty two, resolution of the course to a step vehicle, yes, from community action agency Dallas that's still, whereas, I don't know, six, that's twenty three, that's two, six states, that accept this other box provided, it's tied to the council's management control of finances and all the property, real and personal loan from the city, our town, and whereas the public works of all that given a gift of nine vehicles listed below, and whereas the hearing listed vehicles can be used on public or municipal purposes, now therefore be resolved by the city council, the city's own house, that the hearing listed vehicles below are similar as a gift from the community action agency Dallas that's still, two thousand and one white Chevrolet Silver Island, two thousand and four yellow, blue. Uh, it's like the uh, not the red, red, not the uh two thousand two white Chevrolet, uh, two thousand two yellow, blue, uh the uh, two thousand four white Ford Tars, two thousand four gray Chevrolet Silver Island, I think I got it, the first one, two first two, uh, that's three yellow, two thousand four yellow, uh, vehicles, and two thousand five ten Ford Tars. We have the titles to all those vehicles in my office, I think a copy of those provides, I don't, I don't, she has the original documents right now, the title, that's until the council approves these, and then she will have those titles transferred to her. Uh, and a Facebook dashboard date, and signatures places in that presentation. But any questions? Go ahead, no, no.
What's that, you have a vehicle, but I remember picking on it um Tuesday, and they will say that, you know, we have to be the.
Uh, I haven't got any further, I think, uh, Mr. Hitz, you said that.
I'm getting down, I'm getting down, uh, I'm gonna clear up today, uh, no keys to not the vehicles and I told those things, so we can defend them, we can go to reliable, we'll be on, with the bin, I'm preparing them as a issue of the vehicle, it would take the key coat and get all the vehicles leaving the bus and uh, get it cold with the key, and and that year, my, I think I got a children's key and get the the switch and the lock, so people can get in all the bin, I'm gonna take it to reliable, it'll be there.
Thank you, I have a question, anyway, I just. But that was the first, I think, I had to pass along. Other, other any other questions about that? We have the, for Admiral Four, the resolution R one thirty four dash twenty one slash twenty two, resolution to reappoint members to the personnel board, whereas the city council of Southern Alabama established a personnel system for the city of Southern Alabama, in audience number two seven eight, and whereas in audience number three oh six, personnel rules and regulations printed in booklet form and attached to the audience, were adopted as a rules and regulations governing personnel access to the city of Southern Alabama, and whereas the personnel board was designed to consult with the mayor's and councilperson personnel director as it relates to policies, rules and regulations, and aid in development of an effective and comprehensive personnel system for the city of Southern, and whereas the May two thousand fifteen revised edition of personnel rules and regulations handbook contained provision of personnel board appointment, membership, terms and vacancies due to the board, and whereas the personnel board consisted of five members serving four year terms, and the terms of two of the last ones expired at the end of the last calendar year, and whereas Joanne Smith and Al Perry have been requested to be reappointed to the personnel board for a hearing stated term, now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Southern Alabama, that's by people who say, both as follows, Joanne Smith is our appointed to the personnel board of the city of Southern for one year term, else will be reappointed, commencing on the effective date of both to approve her appointment. Other questions about, uh, Admiral Four?
I did.
Okay, go ahead.
What actually, uh, I'm telling you, what's the, uh, we've been doing, is a term up? Or is it a, a term, it's up?
I think both their term and uh, Al Perry's terms up, I'm looking for the rest of my.
Okay, two years, please, oh, let me ask you two, it's uh, uh, what, uh, how many years do they serve on this board, what, two years?
Uh, the term is a standard from how you say.
For for your term?
Yes, and uh, hold on just a second, please. Your turn.
Your second, please.
I I I'm, and that's what I was concerned about, because they definitely accept, they don't even have a signature space, the rest of my uh, my resolution. The resolution does call, and uh, I'm I'm not sure about both sides, but that is a little side, the resolution does call for both Joanne Smith and Al Perry to be reappointed, and both their terms did end at the.
And that's out, they're supposed to.
Yes, and and we asked that they both be reappointed for uh, one year terms with eligibility for reappointment. Because those terms are static, so they all, they're right at the role of board at the same time.
Can I ask you? Why have we asked you to do, okay, the term is up, if you are asking us to, uh, both of them to be, uh, one year?
To be reappointed for one year.
Um.
And eligible for reappointment. But but the purpose, just to be clear, the purpose is so that they're all static, they're all static in terms, and we're not trying to have everybody roll off board at the same time.
Okay.
So so, I mean, so basically, uh probably got to get it, keep up with this, for a little while, it was lost.
It was on the road to my attention. Exactly, it was on the road to my attention, I think right before Christmas, I believe, around the middle, so that's when I began to find out that in about two weeks, they were gonna roll off, if we didn't do something.
What you talked about in administrative meeting?
Right, yeah. You have another question?
Yeah, but I I don't know, I don't think it's, it's.
Okay, any other questions? Well, I have a question, but my secretary, that's that makes me find out between my secretary and my wife. Uh, it'll be presented, it'll be presented to you before two, this is my point, yeah, but that was obviously, uh, that was obviously a separate page. I see, obviously, it's obvious, I mean, because I can, but it wasn't presented to you, I was, I was. I have number five. Declaration of Surplus of Unneeded Property, resolution R one thirty six dash twenty one slash twenty two, whereas the city of Southern Alabama almost certainly personal property described as follows, uh, city attached territory, that's behind the uh, resolution. Whereas the cemetery director of the city of Southern has concluded in terms that this property is unneeded in the same as in need of major repair, and whereas the city of Southern desires to dispose of this property by sale to the highest bidder, by bid price provided by an audience nominated through that show, and whereas section eleven dash forty two, that's fifty six of the code of Alabama nineteen seventy five authorizes for municipal government by the disposal of unneeded property, now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Southern Alabama that the personal pro- personal property listed on the attached territory list is no longer needed for public or municipal purposes, as by a player, the surplus surplus property, be it further resolved that the mayor and the city clerk are hereby authorized to dispose of the personal property listed as well by allowing the same to be sold to the highest bidder, by the price of the audience, not with any pre that show, so uh, that, that, they, so, we must approve, and unnecessary signatures. The second page is listed of property from the cemetery director, Mr. Webber Wells, uh there lawn mowers, freezing strap, cousin one, zero turn cook, that tractor. Basically a bunch of old, that basically a bunch of old, and I think he believes that, he believes that in such a state of disrepair or need of repair, that it's impossible, that's probably what.
Is he gonna do the same way, uh, Mr. Hitz, they, they do it, okay, no, that's all I'm.
Okay, uh, move, move on, number six.
Number six. Uh, the, 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 resolution R one thirty two, dash twenty one slash twenty two, to transfer uh Troy Harris from the private tax license department of the city of Southern, whereas the city council of Southern Alabama is authorized under title eleven dash forty three, that's fifty six of the code of Alabama nineteen seventy five, to have a management control of the city, and whereas health reasons prevent Troy Harris from attempting to do to the private zone, and whereas the tax and license component needs to add a licensed inspector position to that law, now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Southern Alabama, by all this files. Uh, Troy Harris should be transferred to the tax and license department as a licensed inspector, effective immediately with a salary of fifteen dollars, fifty cent per hour, thirty two thousand, two hundred and forty dollars per year, adopted by the city council of the city of Southern Alabama. Uh, any questions? Come forward, Ben, those.
Yeah, I'll get it. On this resolution that you give up, uh, about four hairs. Wow, we can, uh, we can attack the platform, um, you know, we already have over time, about, uh because we have five people in the room, and you know, we said, make sure that the county are taking on the tax office, and then there's some other things I think that uh, needs to be uh, talked about.
No, no. For a moment, we had that, like, that possession, that's, that's, you did, if if anything needs to be brought up, there's.
And that's what I would like to do.
Okay. What he said.
Yeah, never act it.
Let's uh, move on to the next.
Number seven, the audience, oh, one, one, one zero one, dash twenty one slash twenty two, submitted by tax person, senior mayor, uh this audience, I I can read this entirely, except I would prefer your permission to summarize this need and the most critical section of the audience, which relates to uh, employees and their use of lead around COVID illnesses. There's been that we have at least two artists on there previously now regarding uh, COVID. This audience feels almost of two, in the sense that there is recitation of what's happening currently with the various mutations of the of the virus, COVID, and uh, it started out as COVID nineteen, this is twenty twenty two, and we're talking about Delta and Omicron, and I think for something else, we should be running out of the gathering, it's probably changing names to describe other various mutations, as to the city of Southern and the necessity for this audience, there is a paragraph on page two, uh a, three paragraphs from the bottom, excuse me, I don't need some water, I'm ready. Three paragraphs from the bottom, uh, there is a statement, well, four, actually, I started four from the bottom, now therefore be our name by the council. Should not say so, that the following COVID personnel procedures being enacted. Any employee that uh, positive COVID nineteen test, and is required as a result to isolate or quarantine will receive a maximum of ten days. will receive a maximum of ten days paid leave per year. After ten days of COVID nineteen related leave, all subsequently attending to COVID nineteen would require use of crew, personal sick leave. We're doing this because, and the mayor put it very succinctly out of that thing, uh, mayor put it very succinctly out of what he did. We have to acknowledge that none of us have control over the virus, no matter. Gone all by his, kind of his business, but as a server. We also have to acknowledge that we can't determine who will get sick, when they get sick, or how many people get sick. But they are entitled under the law, when they do get sick, to take off. And by health requirements, it's demanded that they take off because you don't want to work around anybody who COVID. I'm not going to work around anybody who COVID. If I get it, I'm not going to be around you. But they're entitled, employees are entitled to certain leave when they do get sick. We're trying to, uh, address the issue of employees getting sick and being out longer necessarily than ten days. And how that affects their leave, family medical leave act, as well as not discouraging people from admitting that they're sick and wanting to be needed to go home. If you provide a distance center and tell people that they're going to have to go home and not get paid, they're going to work sick. And what's going to happen then? Half of us in this room. Or more, so the effort is intended to allow them to take what time is available under federal guidelines, under state law, as well as far as our personnel policies in the city of Stone are concerned. I think it's encouraging, I think it's employee friendly. Again, it's an attempt to deal with a problem that quite frankly, I don't think anybody in the world has been able to handle yet. But submitted to the council for your consideration, deliberation, now.
Last question. I, I understand what you're saying, everybody, uh, you didn't use that, uh, uh, this vaccine, you got the shot? And then like, yeah, I, I, I think, uh, we got some people who say they ain't going to get the shot. So why are you going to be up today? If you're not going to get the shot?
You're going to have to talk to the Alabama legislature. The Alabama legislature. And this wisdom is considering legislation right now or has already delivered.
They're trying, but they ain't taxed as long yet.
They haven't yet.
Yeah, okay.
But they're busy talking about money right now.
Okay.
Council, council, right now.
And I'll just, I'll just, you know, because I.
Your point's a good one, your question's a good one.
I mean, she, you know, I've been fascinated, I've been there my boots and shopping. I got one of my military clothes, she was on the laws, dude. And I ain't no man of Democrats, they need, get the president, fuck, whole family got COVID. Whole family, all seven children, that hood, everybody got COVID. Cause, feels like I'm not going to let nobody win, they don't stop. That's the most crazy thing, where, when I had COVID, I couldn't even have a day. So, that's, that's the only thing I'm saying, we got people that, they, they're not trying to protect themselves. Then I've seen people I know take the COVID, they having a ball, they trying to put a mask on. Oh, can I feel fine, but all of this.
Uh, council.
I, I'm a busy boy, I survive this.
Can I say?
Council, don't talk.
I'd like to say this, I know, uh, you are turning and you gave us support this, but we have to look at the legislative branch, or I know you say they, they, they have not passed that law yet. Uh, until certain things that, uh, I think that, uh, there's nothing wrong with, like Sam said, all of us that have to take our shot. If it's ten days, I could problem with that, it's ten days. They changed it, if everybody take their, their shot, they don't take our free shot with their boosters. The normal days now, they're using five. And, and the reason why I am very cautious about what you get sick. Through the next, through the next phase, they have not passed it yet. And I don't think that we should, uh, try and help, uh, that long yet until you pass what you're trying to do. And I have nothing wrong with, uh, I think ten days.
So, the purpose of presenting this to you is for your deliberation acceleration. I would add that, as well as the fact that there is a general disagreement as between the federal government, I don't know how many states and municipalities and county political services are calling it, no.
The one that chaotic.
So, Mr. Mayor, I think, just, just the point of affirmation.
It's not ten days, it's a maximum of ten days.
Okay.
So it can be anywhere from five to ten, but what we are acknowledging is that everybody's health and the health recovery is not the same. There are some people who may not, who may still test negative. Five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten days, I mean, still test positive. And so you don't want to just lock yourself in here to five days, that, that's what that's about. The other thing too is American rest and plan money is available to supplement that cost for the city, if it was used to use that money in the envelope.
All right, thank you. Uh, Pastor Carmichael, I'm going to move on to the next slide, wait Pastor Carmichael.
Uh, sir, there, there are six days.
Set, oh, right. Yes.
Up to, uh, this is a day for a month. Not a day for a month, pardon?
Uh, personally, I'm kind of on this call, personally, I'm, I'm. The right in that, and the merit of that is amplification of the fact was, uh, maximum of ten days. Doesn't say that anyone has to be out for ten days, we're not, we're not ordering anyone to stay on for ten days. That's not the intent of the actual wording, is, the wording is maximum of ten days. Uh, and then other sick leave accrue can be used too. We're wanting people to take advantage of and harness that you approve if you think it's appropriate. And I, and I suggested it's appropriate. As well as the family, individual employees for family, I believe, and whatever accrue leave they have. Not trying to restrict any of it, we're trying to broaden the availability of what time they can use and still get paid for work. We all want people coming over to the city. Okay.
Right, it's a, it's a real, uh, technical subject.
It is, it, and, uh, I'm, I'm, I know there's something in personnel, uh,
proof of illness, uh, but perhaps with this, we should be, uh, more direct about having proof of, I mean, a positive test, maybe or something, I don't know, but just, that's just something that's very common. And I don't know, that's, you know, looking at that habits, that's why I'm.
So, we, we will, uh, we will go that, uh, uh, I quote the dog, personnel director, city attorney about that. Uh, we do require negative test results, a matter, right? What you're suggesting is perhaps a positive test result showing that you actually testified to good, good.
Yeah.
Because this isn't a right, this is a privilege, so that would not, I don't think the property would need to be processed rights in order to actually be able to provide some type of proof that they're entitled to this specific permissions and leave. So I think that's definitely something really against.
All right.
You, you, I'm not sure whether they're not, ever, well, you all really appreciate it, wow.
I've had, right. Right, I had, I had a month on Alabama, three shots. Took a vacation, but Christmas came back and submitted voluntarily to a test. So I would come back to work, sick, had no symptoms, zero symptoms. And voluntarily submitted to a test, and I came back, test came back paid. So, we, we, we're all on the same page in terms of wanting to do the right thing here, right?
All right, move on to the next slide, please.
Uh, number eight, I believe, was about, uh.
Yes, sir.
Uh, this is, this is copy of Maggie Elway contract, uh, I read over it. Twice, I want you all to have a look at it, so you can ask me any questions you have. Not necessarily tonight, or tonight, also you can choose, but more specifically Tuesday before you vote. Very efficient question, I want you to have time to look at it first. Uh, and since it was included in the magic board, that was part of the technical list, I know you did not have, uh, to your reason.
I just want to add.
Go ahead.
Did Maggie change their, uh, previous, uh, they got one sequence, or did you choose to be one else?
I, I actually have three.
You got three?
Yes.
No, I'm talking about the, uh, time they took.
The, the, they did July nineteen, July nineteen twenty twenty-one.
Is this their, their term, they only had one, they only did, they changed this time, their term from the elevator?
Councilwoman, this contract has, as far as I can tell, nothing to do with the previous contract, it's simply put, the same company. It has nothing to do with the previous contract, except it's put the same company.
Okay, well, I'm saying the language.
The language.
Yeah, I'm talking about the terms, the conditions on the elevator.
The terms and conditions are different in, in everything I've seen, uh, in the main respect, uh, as far as all the material terms.
I compare this with the old contract, not, I'm saying my thing. And, uh, I, I compare this, this year, what we just got, new one, with the, and, uh, I just wanted, wanted to reclamation, they using the same, uh, they have a little difference. That's why I, is this, uh, they, they, their company changed their term line up there, when I said, when I said change.
You're asking what comparison, this contract that you old contract.
Yeah, comparison with the first contract that they had, you know, back in nineteen, uh, what is it, nineteen? When the power being with the first could be, elevator. The language.
I, I see no similarity in the material term. The categories of the contract haven't changed.
Okay.
In what areas they're addressing. But I see no similarity in the material term, price, uh, they even asked for, what, forty dollars, I think, upfront. Uh, and we already paid that, uh, the cab was the biggest issue. I think they had to do some additional work that I think was not included in the first, uh, uh, examination. And, and, uh, in most material respects, I don't think we're talking about the same contract, no, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, and they, they had different, uh, uh, on the, those, uh, those contracts, hey, you can run, if you, protecting the system, we do, we do, the elevator.
And, and, I do, I do, we, we talk about this book, and who the parties are that are negotiating the contract, that's all, no.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. But then any other questions? Item number nine, what I have, council, Johnson. I'm asking, I'm asking Johnson earlier, the end of the seal, the process of the procedures of your street change, uh, application process, I wanted to present that to the council tonight for you to open, uh, to review, uh, the survey of individual, what I have, uh, those names and addresses appear in the end of, along with a form that I draft, which states that each person on that street has an opportunity to be heard, um, agreement or disapproval with the name of the street being changed. And that their signature address on the form would consent, would give their consent to the street change. Also that they were responsible individually for notifying all their business and legal connections or associations, not the city, once the street is changed, of the due address. That's what you have in the end of, it was required for the application to be sealed. That's why I handed it to council, council, asking you not to open it until six times, the council will play it to review. You can do that at your, at your pleasure right now, tonight, uh, or Tuesday night, if I have no problem with it anyway. But there are also couple maps, couple maps attached showing the location of, of that. Um, I'm trying to, um, I respect, uh, councilwoman, Congress, and all, um, all of this, they go, they're, he's asking about, you know, the work, you know. I just gave you, I just gave you, I told, I wasn't thinking.
I don't want to open, it's not open.
But you're open for it, you're open for it.
Two, two.
You want to keep it, okay.
Two, nine.
Okay, uh, the, uh, the, the person, please, uh, the city of Stone, uh,
What is that, the council?
I don't know, we can't be in the front. No, but listen, 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 because, uh, we did, you have to, you see, city, you can't, those, that, those streets, that.
I haven't asked you a question. She, the person who made the application already asked, and I told her, she will have to pay it.
Yeah, yeah.
She just said she wanted to make sure everybody.
Yeah, I want to have a treat.
Council, council, right now, she says she will pay, she just needs to know that now, and we have to get it back.
Yeah, I'm glad.
Yeah, and she wants to make sure everybody has, has the same, that is, out of Paris, out of Paris.
Yeah. You see, the next slide, please.
I don't know, yes. The alcohol beverage control board, that, 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 that application, uh, Sparkles Salon, this is salon, we got to spell salon.
It's a, um.
It's, it will, that, that we, I, I was trying to, I was trying to avoid that expression, whether it's a little, but, but it's still just a, 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 a. That's my, by my reading, that's a, I think, the owner refers, salon, that's what you're saying, I get it, I get it.
It's a loom.
I, I raised my, I raised my hand. Oh. I figured that this is a, and I had, and I would have kept it in the appropriate performance, got reviewed, uh, tax and license. I think, uh, folks, and I have a duty to suggest to you not to.
Where is this located? Uh, what, oh?
Uh, thirteen oh one Water Avenue, Stone, Alabama.
I hope that I'm here.
Thirteen oh one Water Avenue.
What, oh, French floor, no, what did I say?
Is what has been addressed in legislation from the state, legislation in the form of land backs. The city is currently discussing with how to deal with that. And, and a presentation was made at a conference that I was encouraged to attend and did attend among municipal attorneys. And I will present that information to you shortly. Uh, that, that is what's going on. It's what I want to know within, within the.
What's your opinion here? I got a very serious problem. Uh, we, uh, just sent another thousand people back, uh, commemorating homes and everything. I have all, um, I have had certain people come and ask us to address it. Back in twenty nineteen, there were five hundred thousand dollars awarded to the community, one to the home. It is twenty twenty-two. If we pass through this, the bottom part of this house is falling in. And I don't know why, uh, the COVID was having something up there because it is not, uh, it, it is completely the front. It is gone. And then the resident next to the home is, uh, you know, he talks to me and, uh, and my thing is, uh, we need to find out. It needs to be something, uh, UIC attorney, uh, who was awarded, we find out what the plan. Because this put pressure on the citizens and U B M where this is supposed to be, uh, becoming museum. And if the money was awarded in twenty nineteen. And, uh, we need to find out because the house was bottomed beach. And there is no sign of, of letting, uh, from the COVID force and citizens in that area pressure being put on them. But the pressure is not going to put on, I saw this is on the main street, uh, where all the historians, it would be. And, uh, we, as our attorney, we did to address the revenue to them about their, their money.
Well, Reverend, Justice Johnson, I think you are right in that COVID force business, correct order of basis. I can do whatever research is required in addition to that, but I think I know exactly what you're going to say to them, wanting to.
And we all know that it was awarded over five hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I didn't know that. That's why I said I can do this there. It goes with something, but COVID force is where it's just so out of the council.
Okay.
It is, it is indeed, and it does appear to be in a condition that would be, uh, definition of an outdated structure. I think COVID was involved first.
Okay.
Councilman.
Um, tonight on the five o'clock news, actually they had that on news tonight. It said that due to COVID, it had slowed up the raw material. To do what they did for their house, so maybe, you know, we could pass that on the COVID force. They, so you like the seven o'clock news, the crowd will be back on their end tonight.
Which town?
Some of them.
Which town?
Uh, town twelve.
Twelve.
Yeah.
Back.
He's banking, keep, keep out.
Uh, Dallas.
Dallas, I don't know.
Item thirteen is a joint venture agreement between Dallas County, Alabama and the city itself. This joint venture agreement was drafted by the county attorney and review, uh, me. It was when I said review, I mean, I read it from the first line through talk with the, the fall, the director of regulation. Dr. Alicia Hendricks, uh, even over again today, uh, kind of self imposed day before presenting to you. And in the main, this is an agreement that's according to be approved. That cannot recommend your consideration for risk approval. That involves softball and baseball. And the reason it's kind of sensitive is because it's almost in January and basically, I don't know, it's bringing practice thoughts, right? So, uh, we talked about less than two months. So several days, uh, this agreement though is between the county, Dallas County and the city. So, for the county to hold certain age rules, baseball, softball, the boys, uh, age rules five to twelve, twelve, very old age. Five to nineteen and the city, uh, those same individuals ages thirteen through fifteen and sixteen through nineteen, uh, for youth baseball. And, uh, thirteen through fifteen and sixteen through nineteen at our block park, also known as Terry Beach Field or something. The city and the county have agreed on certain, on, on, under this joint undertaking. There are certain things we've done, both males and females, boys and girls of those age groups, five all the way through nineteen. And on page three, sections two and three. You see set out the county's responsibilities and obligations and the city's responsibilities and obligations. The county's responsibilities will be mainly that of, of preparing and, and keep maintaining, keeping the Dallas County, uh, facilities in condition to be played, will play to take place. Uh, receipts of the county will be handled by the county, uh, and receipts by the city will be handled at the city events will be handled by the city. The responsibilities and obligations also allows for some cooperation and collaboration between the county and the city. On preparation where once work group or equipment may lack, the other work group, office support. The fifth, the fourth section, city on field repairs and upgrades speaks to that. And in the sense that the youth softball league and baseball have not been conducted on city on fields for past several seasons. As a result of which potential repairs and upgrades are necessary in order to make the fields ready and safe for youth softball and baseball programs. The city is not solely responsible for payment of expenses itemized below and in advantage of record. The scope of work of these repairs and upgrades to be to place the city on fields in condition comparable to the condition of the county on sports fields. Under the names of Mr. Richard Davis. The city also had, the county has its person in charge, the city has its person in charge of paperwork, uh, collateral to the joint meeting. The sports complex, uh, listed in four eight, eight page, uh, four, paragraph four, eight. Sets out, uh, the following repairs and upgrades in the softball complex. The city itself will provide, uh, use or direct purchase of the following items in the softball complex. Uh, list there and, and Terry Beach Field and Block Park, that's. For the setup to the tune of about fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for repairs and upgrades at the park. The city itself will provide the use or direct purchase of the following items, block park. And program oversight and operations is set forth from paragraph five. Administrative functions, registration process, baseball program administration, softball program administration, uh, insurance. Game facility management, gate management officials, uh, item six, section six. Tether distribution of revenue, A P C softball to be kept in the city, which they have handled. The county will read the function of concessions, the revenue will be split fifty fifty. Registration, the city will retain all registration funds. Security, uh, catch traps in section seven, mislaid provisions in section eight. Are basically standard ball playing contract agreement, which I approve of most, uh, city impact, pretty much all city contracts. Uh, the Alabama immigration law compliance, government law, state of Alabama, certificate of Dallas County. Uh, separability is to the entire agreement, uh, being in order and, uh, and no change allowed unless they are right and agreed to sign both parties being found. Again, the negotiations are going to take place between the city and county. I think that I hope the mayor and the department of recreation and Dr. Alicia Hendricks. And, uh, I was including, uh, that negotiation will take place and ask if that, Dr. I presented to you a regular deliberation approval.
Thank you. Counselor Randolph, being counsel on the time, being counsel for our.
Yeah, um.
And counsel Johnson.
You, you had to say that, uh, the county might have to put age limit. Yeah, it said age limit for the county, you know, the little league, they go to, I can say, uh, five to the twenty, you know? That was your money maker there. So if the city is going this way, it's blind. If you get in the county, oh, that, that was a fair cost. If they were fifteen and up, yeah, everybody come to this whole thing. Nobody, nobody, you ain't gonna make no money. Whatever you said, fifteen thousand dollars, uh, uh, that, 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 okay, really? You ain't gonna cut costs from fifteen thousand dollars on revenue. Cause you, you, you pouring that thing, you blind. If you getting them all, the, the little league, that was the most of the day, bro. I think, I think, tell, prepare that nigga, tell. And this is, I ain't gonna put you in, this is a blind man contract. Do you get them all that? I'll say, hey, let me get, uh, some of those, because you need to get some of those. Okay, so county, okay, you can get the five, six year old boy, you can get the five, six year old girl, something like that. But don't be a normal, that'll be your revenue. That's all I'm saying, but you know.
Before I answer this, of course, can I ask this to anybody? Who won't answer? My question is, who's gonna pay? Are we supposed, are we, we're not gonna have to pay their, uh, directors of the. We can't add our director of, of reparations. Are we gonna have to pay their director of their regu- reparations, putting on?
Okay, that's the question with both.
And I'll push it out.
I believe Mayor Rose to respond to Councilor Randolph first.
Yes, uh, of course, you was about anything first, whatever. I'll fill it in once, but then.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, couple of things that we do need to make sure that we understand our facilities. Our, our fields are not designed for little league. I know that that's been done. However, dimensions of a little league field versus dimensions of what we have, we have full regulation fields, which is wonderful. And there are other things that we can do with those fields outside of just having children or adolescents play on those fields. So that's one reason, because in order, we would have to bring in some extra things for our fields to meet the dimensions of little league baseball and or softball. So that's one thing that we would not have to do. Their fields are not designed for regulation. Ours are, and I, when I talk about regulation, I'm talking about high school, college and beyond. But we have that, but they do not. So that's one thing. And there is a desire in the city and the county for older children to have an opportunity to play. That is where we come in because we do have the proper fields for that to happen. So that's one, I mean, that's really one of the main reasons.
Yes, the other question was, uh, the payment of their.
Well, no, we, we do not have to pay their, their, um, people. It's not, it's not the same. Um, I think agreement that you had at one time, but that is not it. We don't pay them. We don't pay their personnel. We have our own personnel that we're gonna provide certain things like lining of fields. And there are some things that our people are going to do, and that has serious, uh, value, and that has been laid out before you as well.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, the, the concession, concession stage, how you gonna figure it out? You will be as, both long together?
It's, it's a fifty percent break both sides. So we get fifty percent of the funds and they get fifty percent of the proceeds. No matter which, no matter which, um, no matter what, what facility.
Well, yeah, we, 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 we've got to understand the, 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 the thing is, is that for those who may not recall. It used, this, this relationship used to be reversed. The city managed the program and the county participated in the city's program. When we set out a couple of years, the county started their own program and, and developed a relationship with the league. Uh, and when they did that, the league is not going to license two leagues in this community. So, so, so the thing is, it really is that I, so what ended up happening is since the county is already established. Instead of going in to try to put it back the way it was, we're saying, okay, we will just slide in under the county and we will be the city county league. Uh, to service all the children of the county. And, uh, and then we will be able to use their fields, which are specifically designed for little league. And our fields, uh, which are designed for they did, but. And that, that then gives everybody the balance that we need. And it is a good, a good opportunity for city and county work together to reestablish our baseball and softball program. And to bring this, uh, back to life, uh, you know, cause I, you know, I used to coach the league too. And we, 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 when I came to play, we did. And, uh, I mean, our baseball program kicked off, it was looking like the limits. And, uh, we're gonna bring it back.
Mayor, uh, Councilor Carmichael, and then Councilor, Councilor Johnson.
Uh, I just see one, um, soon as I, uh, uh, let's see. City responsibility, Dr. Henderson, pay three. Uh, one, it says responsibility for full weight, it's not people, all fields owned by Dallas County. And two, grass cutting, riding, running, and baseball, softball, field, let's just say, I own my city itself, I think.
Yes, and, uh, no, uh, he's asking about the maintenance, uh, agreement for the fields.
Now, the grass cutting is something that we put on the table to provide.
Yeah.
Because we, we have the equipment to do that. The grass, the grass cutting and the lining of the fields, we have the equipment and the staff to do that, if that's the question.
Again, he, he's right. I asked for that change to be made already, but I'm saying it was.
Oh, okay, okay.
Under, under section three. Page sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he's right. I actually changed, I actually changed housekeeping and other routine tasks under section three to lining of baseball and softball fields. But that should more correctly read the city of self for, for, for.
And, and then, um, so, so, but, but, um, under, we'll place four, under written number four, run with it, we're four, sorry. Uh, uh, we're providing, looks like twenty-nine thousand for repaired and upgraded softball complex. And then, uh, we're also, you know, provide fifteen thousand for, uh, for repaired and upgraded block park. So we're, we're providing the repaired and upgraded softball complex and then twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Yeah, face it, we got, you know, the hurricane deaths and all that stuff, it's about forty.
Hey, okay, so this is the, this is the city itself, which I'm like.
Yes.
The, the.
Yes, and block, and block, that's correct.
And, and that's, that's, uh, that, that is. They want, uh, insurance funds to have with that.
Yeah, that, yeah, we do, we, there is, there are insurance companies that are involved in this transaction.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you for, uh, your, your, your input. Excellent, excellent. Um, just not a comment on these.
Council Jefferson.
Oh, sorry, Council Jefferson, oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, what, uh, what eighteen and nineteen year olds, whether they are independently sponsored by the city or sale, uh? I mean, you get the, I was school, eighteen, nineteen, they, they. Did you hear that question?
I believe the question was eighteen and nineteen year olds, if that would be an independently, was that the question? Sponsored by the city?
Yeah, basketball system, to me.
Yeah, well, uh, no, actually, the, that league does, um, have an opportunity for people to play up through, uh, nineteen. However, if we do not have enough teams, then we may have to be, or enough people to play, we may have to be independent. So, but we're just offering, uh, putting that out there. We know that those children would have to play at block park. Because that's the only park that's regulated for that age.
What we want to do is get every child in the baseball club back and fix the baseball and stuff. And that's what we're going to do. And we, we're planning on doing an announcement of this publicly with the county combined with county city, inviting council members to try that. But.
Absolutely, Mayor, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna thank y'all for telling you, losing this, uh, to Bad Grant. Bad Grant, and all our kids, and, uh, they, they have, he, my grandkids are playing out there. So now we're trying to give them, I'm glad it's coming back to my mind, to the council and here. We, we got to welcome this back, but I'm, I'm, and all those who had the opportunity to play out there, I apologize to my kids. So I'm glad to see them getting back together. I enjoyed when I was out there with my kids and, um, so, uh, let's, let's make this happen. So just good, I'll put off some of the candy, John, so.
Very rich, I just wanted to comment. Um, I'm glad we're asking questions, uh, about audience, because this, I was also. But I'm very glad, um, and there's a focus on the young people in the summertime. Something positive for them to do. And stuff like this. This is community. This is what we remember growing up in a cell like this, that had baseball leagues and all that kind of stuff. So, um, I, I, I wasn't as concerned financially as I am about other idols. But I was most concerned with concentration on the people, our young people. Give them something to do in the summertime, positive, they're relevant to do something negative that's on purpose. So this is a good thing and I'm glad to see that.
This is just one.
Excellent.
We don't, we don't get a bit.
Excellent.
That's good stuff.
Listen, man, that's.
Yeah, we got it, and I, I, I got it.
All right, Mr. Turner.
Uh, I have a question. I have fourteen, uh, all my boys, uh, I'm doing, I don't know what, so, whatever, I don't know my life is happening. A big store grocery, uh, big store grocery, uh, C is the government located at one thirteen Dallas Avenue. Seven Alabama, sixty-seven, one, type of life, we saw this retail here, all purposes only. Retail table, my, all purposes only. Uh, this is being presented to be physical perfect.
Perfect.
That was, that was very, 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 very.
So I have that situation.
So big store grocery is ready to be built. We've already done first week. Thank you, Matt. Yeah, Councilor Chris Thomas.
Let me bring it up the first time, I'll be active.
Uh, I think there was some more, uh, things that needed to be done. Probably was about the police department. Uh, they said, uh, just saying that I asked them not to go on the first.
I think you pulled it off, it says that your ass, uh, been published, something about the publication.
Right. And I referred to clerk because I was asked to take it all, five rounds, I believe.
It should have been published at least one time, but no, they said not made it to more than.
That is asking a question, Councilor Thomas. All right, Councilor Mike.
I'm just, I just want, uh, this is the paper that you got here, so I'm, I'm pulling the paper to, uh, make sure that they're okay. This has been a ice cream shop, an ass line, a trophy, for, yeah, and, and, and it's going to sell alcohol. But so I just want to make sure the paper is okay with, uh, I, I shouldn't have, that's your water, right? That's all, yes, that's all, that's all, that's.
Yes, Councilor Randolph.
I don't understand what you're saying, but I don't, I don't, I don't say it. More than, uh, two hundred people from a church, that's all the thing. So, hey, you guys can do it. Turn it over. I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you gotta be careful how you assess them. You have to come and sit alone. Cause me, and I'm trying to get you, you bother me. That's the way, you know, if you're not in a church, it's mine. Your mom said, uh, so many people in church, that's all the thing. You don't say nothing about the church, no. The gospel church, or social church, or.
You're gonna say somebody resonating.
But I'm, I'm just, that's your goal, I've been saying, you know, this. I'm gonna follow you, I'm gonna keep that out.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look into that.
And, and if you look to the second page of the application that was formed, somebody asked, well, somebody asked the question. Uh, on Councilor Randolph, uh, Councilor, uh, I have a genuine concern about not only how many businesses are located, so on, all businesses we can get, so on, they're lawful. But I have a sensitivity to, to something that popped up today and bill the deals primarily with the stuff you're talking about now. Uh, how much alcohol per gallon are we selling? I can't control that, uh, state law and your laws. But I, but I totally, seven thousand, a bunch of it, I do worry.
Thank you. I think there are a couple of items from the attorney's report. We appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Turner, for presenting all of those. Did I have to say the turn something, please? Yes. Go ahead, Councilor Randolph.
I actually take a look on. The council, the meeting.
I said, I did call that, and I haven't gotten to ask yet, but I'll see if I can get one.
Okay, and he was not gonna double mine, it's not gonna, I, I didn't, you know, uh, feel, uh, uh, the council, okay. Okay, Kelly, I was asking, but what, 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 what about? Have you actually been, been, been?
Kelly, I haven't, I haven't, we're gonna be a castle.
The, the guy named, uh, Rick, uh, talking about purpose, uh.
Right, right. Yeah, uh, we had a talk the other day, we had a conversation the other day, so I'm just hoping you can, uh, there tonight, go over it, discuss the plan. We do, how many you can go back on this, to make sure, like, plan, everything you gotta say.
Okay.
And I wasn't pulled into that discussion without the act of any.
Oh, okay, I thought you did that, okay, you can, you will.
I'm thinking of the legal way of determining.
Right.
It got a little bit of a problem.
Council. Council of the Union, uh, the closest, called my attention, something, uh, she asked me to do the day night, I'm having a problem doing what I did in the, just pointed out. Uh, your council members have suspended today, January twenty, on the state's recognition of, if proposals were received for following repairs as a result of hurricanes, they have a memorial stadium, block, all grandstands and softball complexes. The resolution will be forthcoming for, to council be your consideration and approval. This was presented yesterday, and she placed a, I mean, today, because she placed a call to me last night. I was occupied with something else when she called, and, and, and Councilor called me last week, well, there's. Zoom contact that I wanted to briefly summarize that, took out of this, uh. This is tied in with a resolution with the agreement between the county and the city. Origins of the softball and baseball, uh, complexes, Dallas County and city, so, complexes. But that's why I put that's been pointed out, that these repairs, this were already received, if proposed were already received. On repairs to that, because some questions being asked were about, uh, insurance funds to go with the repairs. Yes, there are some, but I don't think enough to cover all of the repairs. That's why these bids are gonna have to be considered along with what needs to be done to get the baseball field ready.
Okay.
Uh, Councilor Carl, I asked, I think you might have that one as a president now. Uh, if I would summarize, I mean, that was going on last night, which you attended. Uh, Council President Young, Council Vice President Carl, Mayor Perkins. And I met on Zoom last night, I think it was around five thirty, to discuss the letter that had been presented to the mayor. I had not seen the letters in the entirety, uh, till a day or two ago. Uh, but we got to discuss what considerations could or might be made as far as the council and the executive branch were concerned. Uh but we got to discuss what considerations could or might be made as far as the council and the executive branch were concerned. In terms of addressing the employment of a law firm, nobody's trying to stop anything. The question was how best to proceed and suggestions were asked for and were received by the Council President and Council Vice President. From the mayor and last night and myself, and we were asked, we agreed to reduce to writing. Any recommendations that might be made and forwarded to the firm that opposed the agreement. Uh those recommendations are now gonna be part of a thread. Uh that was created of all the people's emails that was present last night at that conference, to be submitted to the council, uh your consideration.
Very good.
I believe that's it.
And uh I thought it was a good discussion, very good discussion.
Thought it was excellent discussion.
Alright, let's move on now to uh business items. Uh Councilor Randolph, we have the first two. Are you good? Okay, let's move on to.
No, 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 no.
You're not, okay.
One of them.
Okay.
I I put the uh like water work, credit card.
Yes, sir.
Because I I just want to know. I mean, the same, they're talking pay for water, they're paying two fifty bills, they want to charge me six dollars. They they only, they only charge three dollars. Uh we're seeing, so if I said, if I got twenty, if I got four bills. I'm trying to pay my one day for my job, we have to. So my question to you though, uh I I need to counsel, counsel to try to do some research on it. Because I could go through the county and pay by business property that use the same credit card, they only charge me one time. They don't charge me three times. And I paid my uh my state taxes here for one one time, they only charge me uh one.
So what you're saying is they're treating each of those things as different transactions. And because they're treating them as different transactions, they're charging that fee associated with use of the car. Versus for the county and for us, we treated all all those multiple properties with multiple things. We treated it as one transaction and therefore we don't charge the credit card one time. I hear you, Councilor Thomas, yeah, and after I saw the journal, I think I changed, go back.
Now, uh Councilor Randolph is correct, but now that is something out of order control. Uh it's like I'm about to power around this, when I pay my my bar uh property, I mean, like you, when I do. My body shop, uh like you, they charge me two transactions, I tried to combine both, but one day they won't do it, they have to separate. And uh so I'm looking for the announcement why, uh with the way that the the port is out of that the water work that I'm doing. Now the fee does not come from the water, it comes from the credit card, I'll cover that doing it. Uh also, even my insurance stuff, when I when I got two different policies, I thought that I can combine all along. This is one day, one day, even if it's a separate, separate transaction for for each uh uh insurance policy. So I don't know why, uh but I I asked the uh treasurer about it and they said that's what it is, and each transaction, you know, because of it. I I I don't make, I don't make a cent for what I did with it too, but I recall some other agents did the same thing. I I I'm not really sure, uh Councilor Thomas, but he wasn't born, but you know, I'm saying what.
Um I was gonna ask you possibly for for you to touch your own board. Uh um suggest to the board that um the person that is part of that reached out to that company and asked them. Is there a way for a customer to add additional account as a tax?
To that, oh, I mean, we were looking to.
It is actually, so if I call in, they're only, you can only handle one account.
Correct, that's right, that's right, and that's what's, that's what happens, I mean, then they're gonna charge you uh for both when they had, you know, they, like you said, it's one at a time. And that's when you combine everything you do, uh it's gonna be a fee on each one, but we'll try to see, get that here, that's a good good question. Uh we got a board meeting tomorrow morning, nine thirty, and I will bring it up and have it, I'll speak with you.
Uh Councilwoman Thomas, is that the only company that does that with processing payments, I mean, any other company?
That's true, maybe.
Uh I'm not, but I know that that offer is 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 same way, uh I'm not offering.
Well, I would ask is maybe, you know, if and again, not in water work industry, but if one company that give you what you want. You can maybe shop around, see other any companies that will treat it as separate transaction. Because there may be some company that doesn't do it, because that's hands on a whole of cost to the consumer. And I think what you're saying, because folks are complaining.
Let me also add, the reason um that the fee is added is because the water work has to pay a fee.
To use.
And I know everybody knows that. You can't use your debit or credit card, the credit card company charges you a fee.
And the water is not collecting.
Right, it's not going to water.
Correct, I'm looking at that, and also bear in mind, you don't need it more, and he can remind me more when we're looking to that, and I would really, 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 uh. Uh for the county.
Thanks.
Well, you said, if you want to charge a fee, charge the, you know, credit card company, probably you, it'll cost you three dollars, they charge you six.
No, 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 I'm not.
You know, I'm just saying.
Right, right, but but that's what we, we don't have credit card to charge, that's what we have to charge. So it means water will come in my debt out of the fee off, that real wants to become this. And I'm looking to that part, right, water will come in my debt.
Because actually, you don't even know, yes, the company certainly doesn't know what fee the credit card. Like this 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 running car, doesn't even know what fee credit card company will charge until they get the bill and then do it. So so it's a, it's a percentage based on how much information they get off your card and and so you don't even know how much they will charge you. But they said they tell you it's gonna be a maximum amount, so usually they're gonna just charge that maximum amount for everything for their comfort, because they won't do it.
Because your your, you might have one deal, they're probably, right.
Another one, so they're gonna base it off of the percentage, yeah, thanks. Yeah, okay, very good, uh this is for those items, two of them, item number three, Councilwoman Thomas, to be able to.
All right, uh we have been, I was reading that one, wondering, um one of our monthly, monthly reports. Wow. I've been showing support for monthly, I um think kind of like the accident report, you know, the vehicles and uh. Is like claim report uh that our insurance uh pay and it has come from our, I also, I would like to uh to uh. Ask that if uh we have this be reported to us on on a a monthly basis, when we have counseling.
Yes, please go ahead.
If you remember, uh. The President to to uh manage what the force we get and when we get. Actually, that, of course, actually, uh equipment, you know, all that. I think we're gonna bring up the administrative committee, let's go over what all the documents that's needed.
So let's just place that on whenever we need, have administrative meeting, uh he was talking about uh possible resolution concerning the timing of this receiving documents.
And what.
And so we would uh take it up under the next administrative committee meeting. So if you could uh just forward that request, Councilwoman Kristin Thomas.
I think we mentioned it in the last meeting, maybe, but I'll I'll send you that.
I think you did.
Okay, and we'll just discuss it under the committee, alright?
My next item is on uh the traffic light. Um I know that I've brought up before that the traffic light, our gas catch is used for uh traffic light and things like that. Yeah, like four way type of that, and I didn't know a lot of research on it, and the reason why I do this. This has been um, it bothered me that I've seen what we've been having a traffic light come in for basically years. And uh it shouldn't be a problem because we get a new traffic light put on the intersection of uh. Melter and Washington, because that's a, that's every traffic going through, and you got a four way intersection. Coming in, coming out one way, so um a lot of the citizens have asked me, uh we need to push for that traffic light to be taken. You can recall for accidents, and uh I would like for the council, I would like as a representative of what's happening. To have a new traffic light put up on Melter and L L Anderson, not L L, Melter and Washington. And I would like for public workers to find out what to call to get that traffic light uh put up, it's very, for the safety of our nation. And we have kids behind the school in that location, and traffic be heavy, people trying to come in and out, and it costs, it costs a lot, let me get that in, get that part out. And the other light that I'm 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 talking about, um I received an email. Um it's not about a light out, it's a light that needs to be put on the pole, and the mayor told me, you have the pole down, I need you to hold down there. There's never been a light there on that pole, and it's just in that section, no one. So um I would like to have a light put on the pole somewhere there, right there in the residence, so I can get the light to be there, this is very dark.
Uh did you, did you get the information to, as Elvis has sort of, you could get it to us?
Yes, she did, she got, I'm not, she pulled down everything. This is gonna know uh how I am really happy. Um my next one is dealing with uh.
Could I, could I ask a question? Uh-huh, but I did by radio, I said it's on the radio.
Now, I would probably get a traffic light uh when you go to school.
Okay, I'm, I'm.
Okay, my next is uh. The contract work, uh I'm trying to take care of this, this happened with me, they have hurricane came in, and that was in uh. That was in uh, the dead, I know the dead got put in, in that end, and I did put this on there. But it's important to the community that I removed there, it's it's on L L Anderson, go straight down to the bottom. Where they pulled a tree up in the sidewalk, and uh the tree is on someone else's house. So I would like to find out, and this is, this is the public state people, and the citizens have asked me. Uh I need to get that sidewalk uh put back down and get that tree removed, so I'm gonna see what Mr. Uh.
Did you say the tree is an private problem?
No, the tree came up, the tree came up out of the, you know, the sidewalk padded into the roof, into the tree. The tree came up and pulled the whole sidewalk over, the big tree is, is on some of somebody's house, and the house is gone. But as far as us to do the sidewalk, we're gonna have to remove that part of that tree. I said, we just.
Okay, I I understand, I I think I know what you're talking about.
It's down in my, and they would like to have the sidewalk.
You know what you're talking about.
We're gonna try, we need to get this out. Uh and then and my next one is an update on Mayberry, I have this this family. And for the last one of three months now, we've been dealing, they've been dealing with a sewer. A sewage problem at the address of seventeen nineteen Mayberry Street. I I talked to um. To the engineer, but I I've come to the point now, we need to get this down and I'm taking care of. No one should have, whether it can't uh the the toilet can't flush, everything back up. Even when they try to wash clothes, everything, and they have been very patient with us. And uh I'm asking, their property needs to be taken care of, uh at at address seventeen nineteen Mayberry Street. Um I know you sent me, but I can't, you know, the toilet, and I know you said it's a major problem that we need, that we're gonna have to get it. But uh we need to work on them, get them taken care of, that's two months, that's three months, and we have to take care of. It's about to be, be able to be in their home. I have a private property that got damaged, and it is on, it runs out of. In Third Avenue, over in my history, but happened was, the owner, he lives on the next street over, but he bought the property. I think the fire department damaged, the the fire department sometime was a little bit not fine, and they damaged uh, they busted the water out, you know. Several water came out, and what happened was, whoever came back to put the dirt back, they closed the drain out, so now. He owns this property where his property flooded, and he wants the uh, they would come back and uh open the drain back up, and they closed the drain up. We bring the dirt, and uh he's been uh, this is my third time talking about, I put a water, he's been back out here. When we get this taken care of, uh he he owns that property and the drain ran, ran across, it was open. But then after the uh the water changed that, they kept it with dirt and they closed it, the drain up, put the water to go through now. But the drain is his yard, it's his water. So I got to see you work on that, um to take care of. This is our, our report, our.
Thank you, Councilwoman Thomas, I I think you can address your question at the time.
Yeah, uh Chief, we've been on the uh.
Yes.
Take a fast time, check that red light, uh uh Walmart, care for the movie camera, because when you turn, Ohio, that. So you take a left turn, left turn like you know, in the turn, red, in the turn, yellow, and give you a ticket. And I know, I just don't see it, I know y'all are getting complaints about that, you know, six. But I got a ticket, I paid it, but I paid mine, but I'm like, that was, that is not right, that that, the light turns green. Red then, then yellow. So something wrong with that. I've sent it out to.
You're talking, you're talking mainly timing on the changes.
There's a timing on it, there's a timing on it. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It'd be green in the turn. Yellow, it go green to red, then back yellow, once it go green to red, you want to know, even though the shirt light is on green.
Councilor Randolph, you you can't see under my mask what I'm laughing, because I got a ticket on a blinking red arrow.
No, I said.
Two weeks ago, I'll take it, I'll take it, I'll take, not not there, at another location.
Yeah, that's okay, no, it's fine.
No, it's not okay. It's a good, it's a good point.
Uh and it triggers not just cities, but also state.
Correct.
Because uh that light is operated by DOT, and so that assumption that needs to go to Montgomery, but Chief, I know you got it, so we appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Alright, uh Councilwoman Thomas, you begin your, your, your aisles, are they answered?
Young Don, but if, if, I, I, I will, uh, to see something, you know, move on this, we, we people have been very patient. And, uh, and the representative awards that, I keep bringing their issue.
Yes, sir.
That is like, for me, yeah.
Yes, sir. All right, are there any committees that like to report this time, is there any councilman comment?
I, I don't, nobody report necessarily, but, uh, going back to, uh, this question earlier. Uh, can we get the information that Mrs. Bates posted on the Facebook page, or she messaged it, or whatever, can we get? Can you send that to us?
I saw it on Facebook, you know, it's something that's got disappeared sometime, I don't know. I saw it, I'll see it back if I have.
If you can, I, I'd just like to see everything she did, and, and, um. I, I don't know, you know, this is something that we need to think about, if, uh, if we, if we're up against this, uh, this, this, uh, the. Of all, the, the, the.
The fourteenth of December.
Of nine days, back, so that's.
That's the thirteenth of March.
Thirteenth, thirteenth of March, so we only have two more weeks, then we're distracted, or with that.
Uh. Basically, basically, two more in February.
Okay, yeah, and so, so, uh, I just don't really need to extend that very.
I, I, I wrote down all the statutes she referenced, I have some disagreement over her premise. About landlords versus property owners. Uh, the, the ordinance doesn't say anything basically about landlords. But her, her language is couched in a way that she would, she tended to indicate that this, the ordinance. I thought she said failed to address, well, no, she said addressed landlords, we have no sub, significant or substantial language about landlords. It's property owner driven, that was the whole purpose of the ordinance, but the statute she quoted, I definitely am going to review, I wrote it down, I wrote. I, I wrote all the statutes down, she quoted, that I, that I thought she quoted, and I'm gonna review them in light of, of what I saw, thought her comments were. I'll even call her back up and ask her, tell me again what you, what you were saying, what's the point of your, your discussion? Because I heard landlord, but I also heard investing in property. So landlords as a rule, don't invest in property, property owners invest in property. So I have, I have some questions. I, I get it, I wrote down every statute she quoted.
And I was, uh, what raised my eyebrow was the treatment based off of section eight, which is federal. Uh, because I just want to make sure that we're in compliance with federal law, because the federal law said, this is how you gotta treat taxpayers or involved, uh, in section eight, having. Our, our law already, it would be, you know this, if it comes with a federal statute, it's common with the Constitution.
It's federal state, you know, state, federal state.
So, not, not from all this, but I don't know what you call, this was discussed, the housing authority. Because what she said, she didn't really say a lot of details about this. But in each of the section eight contracts, the property owner can opt to receive that money. Or maybe not, or opt not to receive it. But they opt to receive it, in many instances, who finding out, they were receiving it, but they were not paying. And the tenants were not paying, and then there were instances when they did not opt to receive it. And the tenant was receiving the a lot, and was not paying. And so in either instance, you would go, yeah, I'm not, but if you accept federal money. You know, on a false pretense, and you don't use it the way it's supposed to be used, that's the fish, that, that, that term, that the legal concept, that's, that's a problem. So, uh, that, that was discussed with the housing authority, and, uh, there's still some discussion going.
Okay.
Right, but just for my sure that, that we are over, you know, somebody responsible that law allows.
Well, well, I'm gonna add something else for you to think about, the seven housing authority has their own garbage collection service. We don't even collect. For their, for their tenants, we don't even collect from any of their tenants.
And, and if we, you know, just to make sure we're in touch on this, to get another opinion on, I mean, we need, uh, there's a, he, with this, uh, visiting.
I'll, I'll go wherever we need to go, I'll go wherever we need to go.
We need to go to, to, and there are, or, and get him to make what I said, I mean, even, even more, just to make sure that we're, that we're clear on this.
I'm, I'm gonna let the council decide how much money to spend on that ground, but I, but I'd be, I'd be happy to talk with Hand, Aaron, and all.
And, and that's a bright spot, even if there's a portion of the ordinance that does not comply with federal law. Then only that area of ordinance would be strictly.
It's called seven.
The entire ordinance would still be in effect, the other ones, but only that portion would be strictly, if there is an issue with it, so. There are the rights blocks to it, we just wanna try to make, we know it's not perfect, we just wanna try to make it as good as we can. And all, I need you to make them more perfect, you, and make them more perfect, okay?
And, uh, one other thing I want to mention, uh, I think, uh, the Smith, that, oh, uh, thank you so much for all, for the list that, that we're asking for. If you can provide that message to everybody, and, and, uh, uh, to add on what, uh, counsel Thomas was saying earlier. That if we can get that list, you know, uh, that's, you know, constantly evolving, and, and include. Or, because I, I know that all of our existing resources are not over there, we can get all of that included on this as, as assets. Uh, and, and other, other means, as, 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 uh, uh, list, and, and, and making sure we get a regular report as well.
We are, uh, putting back in place what we usually did, uh, and asset inventory. With, uh, uh, number tags in our, uh, working, to get that done, once that happens, then, then we can, for, 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 for.
Okay, all right, uh, any other committees that you would report, council?
Twenty-four, five, five, two, eleven, and, uh, he may be sending out my list. He's put together this, and, and, well, y'all, yes, yes, you can get it. Oh, oh, hold on, that's the thing.
Okay, any other committees? Yes, committee, uh, Mayor of Public Safety, have you had a chance to have your conversation with the, our, uh, chief candidates?
I have not, I got the, the package for the information, yes.
Okay.
On that yesterday, I got that yesterday, I did, uh, a review of it today, but we scheduled it, then I'm.
Okay, thanks, all right.
Can we speak in, we speak.
Uh, there's some people, yes, sir, all right, and I know, but, all right, okay, thank you. Uh, any other business that needs to be discussed at this time, uh, city, I, council members, you know, councilmen. Hearing them, well, before we say that, go ahead, have a long time.
This, this, did he say anything about that contract for?
For what?
Was there, was there a, a redevelopment authority, because that didn't use me.
Uh, seven redevelopment authority contract.
No, I didn't, but I did talk with, uh, two individuals, uh, connected to the seven redevelopment authority.
You know, you, we got a role, and then you didn't bring that on your bill.
Mm-hmm. You mean attorney, attorney.
On your, that's, yeah. My turn, because I had some questions, and I got some results on it, and this, and that's why I wanted to share it with you.
And one of the results you got, I think I got just today is what I'm getting at, and I wish. I don't know, but I'll talk to you about that.
Yes, y'all have a discussion, I'm.
Yes, sir.
Pretty sure, this, you know, we'll, if, if it's ready, if you go, if someone can get to the phone, if it's ready, if it's ready. All right, uh, with that said, before we adjourn, we've had a very glinty work session tonight. And, uh, and thank you, councilwoman Thomas, so because we made this very glinty, uh, meeting. I would ask that if there are additional questions that have not been asked yet, then you please do those over the weekend. Uh, for email, or whatever medium you choose, so that we can move exponentially on Tuesday. We have a work session, so we can get it all out, so we getting it all out.
Can I say that?
Yes, ma'am. It's present and understood, but hopefully we've done the majority of our discussion now, that's what you have a work session for.
And email is preferred, email is preferable.
Email is great, or you can still call me, too, I think.
Sure, 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 email gives me a record.
So with that said, there being no further business of council and council, this work session stands adjourned.